The meeting of the Bridgewater Board of Adjustment is now called to order at 6:38 for organization purposes. The open meeting announcement, both adequate and electronic notice of this meeting specifying the time, place, and manner in which such notice was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically on January 9, 2024, proper notice was sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger and filed with the clerk at the township of Bridgewater and posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware that the zoning Board of Adjustment policy for public hearings is that no new applications will be heard after 9:30 p.m. and no new testimony will be taken after 10 p.m. Would you please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have oaths of office for Bruce Bon Giorno, Claudio Vecchio, and John Gieske. Would you gentlemen just stand and meet me in this corner by the flag? Is any?
If you would raise your right hand, if you have to debate, I understand. I would like to hear. You follow the square?
I follow the square.
I would support the Constitution of the United States, or ignore the Constitution of the United States. And the state of the government. The state of the government. And I would say our two states in allegiance to each other. Our two states in allegiance to each other. And the government of the United States, and the government of the United States. And in this day, and in this day, under the authority of the people. And the authority of the people. And that I will faithfully, and that I will faithfully, impartially, cautiously, and justly perform, and justly perform, all the duties of the zoning Board of Adjustments, or the duties of the zoning Board of Adjustments. According to the statute of my law, the words of the statute of my ability. That all we got. All right, correct.
I can't talk, I'm at the meeting.
Oh, I forgot. I'm late, so that's good.
Mr. Booth?
Present.
Wiley?
Here.
Lespieza?
Here.
Mr. Min?
Yeah.
Swinney?
Here.
Fresco?
Here.
Mr. Bon Giorno?
Here.
Mr. Gieske?
Here.
Mr. C. Pat?
I'm here.
Mr. Burr?
Here.
Mr. Form?
Thank you. Now the election of offices, are there nominations for the election of the chairperson?
I know.
I make a nomination to elect Mr. Booth as chairman of the board.
Is a man, is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Yes. Don't move. Chairman, there's your gavel.
Thank you, Rich. You run a fine meeting, and thank you to the board for having me back. I think we had a great year, and it was great because of each and every one of you. And, you know, I for sure am still learning as we're going along, and my only advice for this year is, you know, we lost Scarlett, who's been with our town for 30 years, and I think it's going to be up to all of us to carry some water, dig in, and kind of in the back of our minds always remember what would Scarlett do. And again, thank you for your trust and your confidence, and I look forward to a great 2024. With that, next up, we're going to have the election of a vice chairman, opening up to the boards for nominations. And I'm going to make a motion for Mr. Wiley, for vice chair. Could I have a second?
A second.
That was Mr. Bon Giorno. Roger, can you have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Min?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giorno?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, Jim, welcome back.
Thank you.
Next up, the election of a board secretary.
I nominate Andy Fresco.
All right, we have a second, please. That was Mr. Lespieza on the second for Andy Fresco for board secretary.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Min?
Yes.
Swinney? Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giorno?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, Jim, welcome back.
Thank you.
Next up, the election of a board secretary.
I nominate Andy Fresco.
All right, we have a second, please. That was Mr. Lespieza on the second for Andy Fresco for board secretary.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes. Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes. Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yeah.
Don't turn around.
Yes. All right, congratulations to Mr. Fresco.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to elect an assistant board secretary. I would like to nominate Nancy Probst, our land use administrator in the admin office. She does a great job, and when Mr. Fresco can't get over to sign plans, she's an excellent backup.
I second it.
All right, that was Mr. Wiley with a second for Nancy Probst for assistant board secretary.
Chairman, did you make the motion?
I did, yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have reorganization resolutions, appointment of our board professionals. We have appointment of Richard Aller, Esquire, board attorney, the esteemed board attorney from last year, looking to return for '24. Can I get a?
Can I move?
All right, we have Lespieza.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Rich.
You've been doing a great job, welcome back.
Appreciate that. All right. Next up, we have board engineer, Mr. Burr. Again, motion, please, with Mr. Wiley. It was Mrs. Min, second?
Move, Wiley second, and Wiley's a minute. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giorno?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Rich.
You've been doing a great job, welcome back.
Appreciate that. All right. Next up, we have board engineer, Mr. Burr. Again, motion, please, with Mr. Wiley. It was Mrs. Min, second?
Move, Wiley second, and Wiley's a minute. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giorno?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have consultant for our traffic engineering, and that's Bright View Engineering. Looking for a motion, please?
Can I move?
Mr. Waddely?
Second.
Mr. Bon Giorno, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
All right. And as I said, Michael Sullivan, consulting planner, we have a resolution. That's basically until we hire a board planner, he's going to be filling in. Looking for a motion to appoint Michael Sullivan, consulting planner.
I move.
Mr. Wiley, and that was Mr. Bon Giorno, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giorno?
Yes.
All right. And as I said, Michael Sullivan, consulting planner, we have a resolution. That's basically until we hire a board planner, he's going to be filling in. Looking for a motion to appoint Michael Sullivan, consulting planner.
I move.
Mr. Wiley, and that was Mr. Bon Giorno, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
And Mr. Bon Giorno?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have consultant for our traffic engineering, and that's Bright View Engineering. Looking for a motion, please?
Can I move?
Mr. Waddely?
Second.
Mr. Bon Giorno, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
All right. And we, last up, we have consulting radio frequency engineer. That's going to be utilized in our CX case, which is not going to be heard tonight, but I believe that's February 27th. Looking for a motion from the board for Mr. Bruce Einstein for RF engineer consulting.
Can I move?
Mr. Wiley?
Second.
Mr. Bon Giorno, second. Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Yes. Designation of meeting dates. I have proposed meeting dates for 2024, and Roger, do I need to read them, or to be safe, do you want me to read them in?
Let me.
Do you have any changes?
No, we're just. Second and fourth, Tuesdays. Just don't worry about election in June or October now. No fifths. Tuesdays.
So the dates established for 2024, January 23rd, as previously noticed, February 13th, February 27th, March 12th, March 26th, April 9th, April 23rd, May 14th, May 28th, June 11th, June 25th, July 9th, July 23rd, August 13th, August 27th, September 10th, September 24th, October 8th, October 22nd, November 12th, November 26th, December 25th, and regular regular meetings will take place on January 14, 2025.
All right, could I have a board motion to ratify those proposed meeting dates that Roger just read into the record?
I move.
Mr. Wiley and Mr. Bon Giorno, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
And Mr. Bon Giorno?
Yes. All right. And last, we have designation of official newspapers. Roger, could you read into the record who we're planning on using for the official noticing newspapers for 2024?
Chairman, I thought you need that information.
All right, we're sending it down.
Thank you so much for that. So therefore being resolved by the zoning Board of Adjustments of the township of Bridgewater, Courier-News and Star-Ledger are hereby dedicated as official newspapers. The zoning Board of Adjustments for 2024 minutes are authorized to receive all notices of the zoning Board of Adjustment meetings as required under the Owe of the Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion.
Can I move?
Second. Mr. Wiley, Mr. Bon Giorno.
Wiley second, and Wiley...
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Lespieza?
Yes.
Mr. Swinney?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. That concludes our reorganization meeting for 2024. We're going to go offline. It's, the time is 6:49. We're going to adjourn, and we're going to come back at 7:00 p.m. and start our regular meeting. Thank you.[1272.41] All right, Roger, can we get another roll call, please? Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Waiting.
Here.
Fresco.
Here.
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 I'm here.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna open up the meeting to members of the public that would like to speak on any land use issue which is not on our agenda this evening. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion. We're gonna work on Board Minutes, number six. First up is November 14th, 2023, regular meeting. Changes, comments?
Actually, on the transcript, I have little comment. And I gave copies of the comment to Roger. On the very first page, it says Roxbury Township, so instead of Roxbury, it should become Bridgewater Township.
And we also had...
And my name should be taken out. I wasn't there.
You were not present, correct?
I wasn't present.
Thank you, as always, Mrs. Amin. Roger, you have those, right? You have a copy?
Yeah.
All right, any other changes? And if none, could I get a motion, please, to approve?
I move.
Second.
Wiley and Mr. Bonjorno is a second. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have November 28th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Changes, comments? Get a motion, please.
Yeah, I'll move.
Mr. Wiley, second.
Second.
Mr. Bonjorno? Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
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 All right, last up, we have December 12th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Comments, changes?
Yeah, on the December 12th meeting, there are... In the transcript that is provided by the court transcriber, there are multiple typos on different pages. I can go through that if you want, but there's no need to go through that.
We can give Roger a copy instead of going through each one?
Yeah, Roger has a copy of all those. And small typos here and there.
Thank you, Mrs. Amin. Any other changes or comments? If none, could I get a motion, please? Mr. Wiley?
Second.
Mr. Bonjorno, second?
Yes.
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 All right, number seven, resolutions. We have two. The first up is Signature Acquisitions LLC. And Rich, why don't you take us through this real quick?
Sure, Signature had submitted correspondence indicating that they were withdrawing their application, and having started the application before the board requires a board vote to dismiss it without prejudice, which was their request. The board voted in favor of doing so.
Thank you. Taking a motion? Mr. Wiley, your second? Mr. Bonjorno? Yes.
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 Yes. All right, and finally, we have Gateway 70B, an extension of prior approval. Rich, what do we have there?
So Gateway had previously received approval from this board and a first extension and requested a second extension, second extension for six months, which would bring them through June 7th of this year. The board voted in favor of that short extension. There were a couple of conditions, which is that the applicant shall continue to maintain the exterior of the property to the reasonable satisfaction of the township zoning officer pursuant to municipal requirements. Failure to do so would result in the zoning officer issuing a violation to the applicant and that all their representations made in prior public hearings would remain in full force and effect.
All right, and that was Mr. Fresco that brought that to the board, and I know Roger went out to the site. Would those stipulations carry forward on this resolution?
Yes.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion approved, please?
I move.
Mr. Wiley, that was second. Mr. Laspiza. Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
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 Yes. I don't think Don's eligible.
I have signed the date of this recording.
Yes.
For that date. I can ask if I do have enough here that they were not eligible, but then I do have...
If we have affidavit, we're okay.
Are we skip it? Skip it? Because he wasn't here for the vote, so...
That's right. Yes.
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 All right. Next up, we have our land use development applications. Now, we have a very full docket for the next two months. Rich, before we get on to Chimney Rock Self-Storage tonight, why don't we go through any members of the public that may be here for other cases? Let's make sure they're in the right place.
There were other items indicated that might be tonight. For example, we have CX Towers application. That application is not being heard this evening. It is being carried to the February 27th, 2024 hearing at 7:00 PM in this room, and there'll be no further notices from the applicant with respect to CX Towers. Additionally, the application for 1,200 Route 22 land investors and 1,200 Route 22 LLC holding is being carried to the February 13th, 2024 hearing date at 7:00 PM in this room. And again, there'll be no further notices to the public from the applicant. And finally, Bell Holdings LLC is being carried to the March 12th, 2024 hearing at 7:00 PM in this room. And again, without any further notices from the applicant for that hearing date.
All right, thank you, Rich. So that leaves us with Chimney Rock Storage. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Evening, and thanks for having us back. Thank you for carrying this, the last couple of meetings, without further notice. A brief introduction, you may recall, we were last before you on November 14th on this application for preliminary and final site plan with variance relief. During that meeting, the board provided valuable feedback to the applicant in terms of its perception of the variance relief being sought. And even though all that's transpired so far is the testimony being provided by our civil engineer, we did take that feedback back. And we rolled up our sleeves and tried to reduce the intensity of some of the variances that were being sought and outright remove some of the variances that were being sought. Still, at the November hearing, we explained to the board, and will continue doing so tonight, that the topography, the layout, the dimensions of this particular property are such that there's nothing that can be developed without some relief, which is the reality of the site configuration. So as I said, we went back, we tried to analyze every angle of the plan that was previously submitted and made adjustments, and we'll have testimony about what those adjustments are tonight. We've eliminated many of the variances that we were originally seeking. And for those that we did not eliminate, we tried our best to reduce the intensity or bring it as close as possible to the intent of the zoning plan and the zoning ordinance for the site. It's our hope that the board sees a lot of these revisions that were made and will be testified tonight as an expression of our willingness to try to do, to listen to the board, its concerns, and bring this into closer compliance with your ordinance. Our plan is to present more witnesses tonight. And at the conclusion of those witnesses and the testimony being provided, including operations, engineering, architecture, and planning, the board will have a complete understanding of what our proposal is here tonight.
Just one quick comment. We don't have a planner here tonight. The township is hiring a planner. So I'm gonna recommend that when we get to the planning testimony, maybe that's where we're gonna complete our evening tonight so we can get at least a consulting planner on behalf of Bridgewater Township and behalf of this board involved to properly ask questions and vet your testimony. That's okay with you?
Is that, was that done in the reorganization earlier this evening?
Yes, we approved Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I spoke with him yesterday. Yeah, he indicated he wasn't coming today, okay.
Right, well, he couldn't come tonight till we approved it. So it's kind of, you know, cart and a horse type of situation. So just wanted to throw that out to you. And, you know, we do a full house tonight, and you got a lot of testimony. And, you know, when you get to your planning testimony, why don't we talk about it a little?
We'll talk about it when we get there. Let's get through the first three, anyway. We would like to start with the gentleman to my right, Matt Lang. I believe all of these witnesses have previously been sworn in. Mr. Ullrich can confirm that.
New year, new day, let's do it.
New year, new day, let's... You wanna do all four of them at once? You wanna do all of them at once?
Yeah, why don't we do everyone at the same...
I'll take all four of you up.
And Bill as well? Do all raise your right hands, please. You solemnly swear that the testimony you give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. And would you each, let's go in order of your witnesses, if you like, but just identify yourselves for the record.
Matthew Lang, Snapbox Self-Storage, based in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Paul Winters.
Robert Masella, SNS Architects and Engineers, Montana. Already licensed professional planner.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Rich.
Okay. So Matt, you did give some brief testimony at the last meeting in response to some questions, but we really haven't introduced you yet to the board. So I'll start by asking you just to do just that. Who are you? Explain to the board your business, who Snapbox is. Welcome.
Thank you, board. Appreciate your time tonight. My name is Matthew Lang. I am co-founder and COO of Snapbox Self-Storage. We are a vertically integrated self-storage business based in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We have been in business for 10 years. We operate over 50 locations across 10 states, encompassing over 3 million square feet of self-storage and 30,000 individual storage units. And we are here as a third-party management company for the application.
Tell us about your presence in New Jersey.
We currently operate nine facilities throughout the state of New Jersey. We also have another one coming online that's under construction in North Bergen that we'll be delivering in the summer this year.
Is there anything that differentiates you from other self-storage facilities or what your mission is?
Ultimately, our business is here to serve the community. It's a community-based business. Our customers come from a small radius around the facility. As the name would indicate, we try and make this business and process a snap. So ultimately, customers are going through life events, and we're here to make the process for them smooth, easy, and provide great service and a clean, safe, secure environment for them to store their possessions.
Okay. What interests you about this site? Why Bridgewater? Why this particular site?
So as we analyze this location, there are a number of factors that we look at. We look at the amount of competition in a market. We look at the traffic patterns. We look at rental rates that are factors. And ultimately, in our determination, the market is underserved with the amount of existing supply that is in the market. And over the past few years, there's been increased demand for various uses of self-storage. This property obviously has great visibility, and with that, also very good access for customers, which is important for ease of use at a location.
When you do that analysis, do you look at the existing supply of these particular facilities, their location relative to this site, and what they offer, or what you would offer that they don't? Could you talk us about that analysis?
We do. So as we look and we do our market studies, we understand the age of existing properties, the features and benefits that product is in the market. In this current marketplace, there is an undersupply of Class A quality self-storage product, climate control, something that is able to keep, you know, possessions clean, dry. Through that, this type of multi-story facility is a newer type of construction within the industry. A number of the properties in the market are older vintage and do not offer the same type of feature and benefits that a new property would offer.
Talk to us about your planned operations for the site, the employees, who your customers are gonna be. What are the plans?
Yeah, so when we're looking at a new market for our business, we take into account the existing facilities, what their hours of operation are, what their office hours are. We tend to match what is already existing in a market. For instance, customers will have access to the facility between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM with office hours that are staffed by employees typically from 9:30 AM to 6:00 PM. That would be office hours staffed from Monday through Friday with limited hours on Saturday, and we're typically closed on Sundays. With that, we typically have, in an operation like this, two full-time employees, and then we have district managers that would be operating and coming in and checking on the facility twice a month and working with the team. Those two full-time employees are not there at the same time. We overlap in terms of staffing hours, but that gives us coverage. And generally, it's a very light, intensive business where we don't have a lot of customer demand on a regular basis.
Talk to us about security. You mentioned the hours that people are able to access the site outside of when you have full-time employees. So how would they get that access? And what is the security of the... So how would they get that access and what is the security of the facility?
So all of our properties have access control. This specific facility would have keypad entrance where individuals are assigned a unique key code for them to enter the building. Those keypads are disabled after hours, so you're not able to get in. You are able to get out of the building through emergency exits. But the security of it is 24-hour cameras that are running throughout the building and then the access control.
Can I ask a question? You said you monitor as people go in and they come out as well?
Yes.
So if I were to go in and I was a client and I signed in at 9:00 and comes 9:00 PM, you could tell that I haven't left the facility?
Yeah, so there's often exit keypads as well, which then can track the incoming and outgoing of customers. Oftentimes, especially in new developments where we have the ability to wire speakers, we have playback saying that the facility is closing this time, please finish up what you're doing and, you know, exit the building. That's something that we have going on at a number of our facilities that are new construction.
Thank you. Do you also interview people that when they apply for storage? In other words, do you ask them what they plan to do, their household goods or minerals or, I don't know, whatever? What do you do?
So there are a number of ways that customers rent with us. They can do full-service rental online. They can rent through a call center that we operate ourselves. They can rent through the office and the manager there. The lease does stipulate what you can and cannot store in a facility. And so we also, as the owner's management of any of our properties, have the ability to and the right to enter any unit without notification if we feel that there is any issue that needs to be addressed.
Thank you very much.
On the same subject, can you talk the board through, what are some of those items that are prohibited in your lease that you would not authorize to be stored?
I, you know, these are flammable items, explosives, ammunition, generally things that cause life safety issues.
What are, who are your target customers? What's your demographic? What do you expect to be your customers at this facility?
Self-storage is a unique business where really, any demographic, age, income is a possible candidate for self-storage. These are folks that are going through life events typically. And so we are typically seeing customers coming in because they're moving, they're downsizing. It is something that is driven by life events. So this is marriage, divorce, death, children, military, college. All of these life events create need for storing your items.
And in your experience at your other facilities, how often do these individuals visit the site? How much traffic do you see generated at the facility?
So that does vary. A lot of customers, we see them twice. We see them when they're moving in and when they're moving out. A number of customers may use it for business services. So they may be storing files, they may be storing inventory. Those types of users will come in more frequently, but it varies tremendously. However, I would say a majority of our customers are not there on a daily basis. And a typical trip will generate time on-site of less than one hour. I would say it's more in the half-hour range where there's no reason for customers to be on-site for long periods of time, even for businesses that are storing inventory. If you've been in a self-storage facility, there's really no reason to linger around. So they're not that exciting. And ultimately, folks who come in, they get what they need and they're out and on to the business that they really are having to attend to.
One of the changes, and we're going to have our engineer talk about the changes to the plans, but one deals with operations, which is the trash and recycling. How would that be addressed on this particular site since, as the board will hear and have seen on the plans, we have removed the enclosure in the original facility?
Yeah, trash is very minimal from our perspective and recycling for that matter. Recycling is probably more so just due to packaging, boxes, things of that nature. But we don't have any food refuse. This is packaging material from retail items that we might sell for moving and storage, boxes. But overall, that's really it. What we have modified is that we can utilize a storage unit near the loading area for any trash or recycling needs, and we have regular pickup. And, you know, our managers can manage that and provide access to the waste haulers at that time.
And that's all the questions I had for you unless you have something that you think from an operations point of view that didn't get addressed through my questions for the board?
I know in our previous hearing that traffic is a concern. And I want to say that even at a facility that is fully occupied, and in this case, you know, that might be in the range of 700 customers, which on paper seems like a lot. But we have less than 10% of our customer base that is visiting us on a daily basis. And not only is it 10% of that fully occupied space that's visiting us, but they're visiting us through the hours of 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So the amount of trip generations throughout the day is minimal. There's minimal site impact. Folks are not there overnight. And also, at this location, there is no overnight parking. So from an activity perspective, this is one of the few uses that has such a low impact on the real estate and property.
You mentioned a lot of metrics that you gather by saying that certain traffic happens at this time of the day or people don't come in every day. I'm assuming that you generate reports on a regular basis to track this information?
The access control systems really are the leading indicator on activity at a site.
Is it online or is the report generated for one of those two people that are permanent employees to review?
This is software that is web-based, so really, anybody in our organization with the right credentials is able to log in and see that information. It is certainly available, you know, at the site for the managers to view. It's something that they have open on their screens along with our POS system and other softwares. But overall, these are reports that we're able to generate from anywhere.
Thank you.
I wasn't clear on the security features where I have a keypad to get in, and then I didn't quite understand your answer for exiting. Must I key in an exit code? Do I walk out and somehow you know I'm gone? That one wasn't clear to me.
So each facility, each design tends to create or have different demand in terms of how a customer is entering and exiting. In this specific instance, there can be, I mean, ultimately, we want to make sure that from a life safety perspective, folks have the ability to get out without any delay. Typically, these are motion sensor doors, sliding doors, similar to a retail environment. And so there would be that ability to get out of the building when needed. A lot of times, the security cameras can also take tabs on activity and they log motion. And so we can see, if we don't have that exit keypad available, we can also tie it back to the security camera, which is integrated with our access control.
I think what I'm trying to address is if somebody keys themselves in and you don't know whether they've actually left or not unless somebody asks you to check.
So ultimately, that's part of the manager's responsibility and they are eyes and ears at the site. They have a keen indication on customer use. And if there are individuals who they see coming in very late in the day, we often are addressing that type of activity with the customers because it tends to lead to scenarios where somebody is camping out in a unit or something along those lines. With over 30,000 storage units in our portfolio, we have encountered many degrees of this type of behavior and our managers are trained on identifying it and understanding it. And it's also a reason why we really do, even if a customer rents online, our team is required to make contact with them, to introduce themselves, to create a relationship with those customers. And from that point, you get better indication on why they're there, when they're there, how often they're there.
And that's pretty much, as you're describing it, function of the manager, his relationship, the tenure that the manager has, the sharing of his duties with the person who comes in after him. It's, you know, all I'm trying to say is it's a little Swiss cheese-like in terms of determining if somebody's still there or not. You want to be able to let them out, I understand that. At the same time, I'd like to know that they checked in at 2:00 PM and they did in fact leave the building before it closed, even though they can get out after the fact.
Yeah.
Right now, there's no way to do that.
No, that's not that there's no way to do that because there are motion sensors going on in the building. There are security functions that can alarm us that if there are folks inside the building after hours, we have emergency contacts that are notified and we have a chain of command between the manager, district manager, regional operations, myself, at that list, you know.
Would it be fair to analyze how you're describing this to what we may, people in the room may be more familiar with, which is, you know, going to a bank after hours and putting your ATM card to get into the door and then you don't have to do it to get out again. But there's a tracking of what, who goes in, and I'm sure there are cameras, and that's how you track it?
Yeah, very similar to that. Again, it's with a unique key code. And so these individuals are each assigned and so it may be an eight-digit code and something that's not easily duplicated there.
Mr. Lang, I don't know if you saw, it was in the New York Post today. It was, I think it was page three or four. 14 weeks, a couple lived in their storage unit. Now, that wasn't one of your facilities, I'm assuming?
No, I don't think...
Didn't mention that the facility...
I don't see Snapbox notification come up on my Google News, but no. No, and...
Is it possible for that to happen in your configuration of your security? I mean, 14 weeks is a long time.
In our organization, that's not possible. The amount of, the amount of understanding that a manager has of the property that they are overseeing is tremendous. And it doesn't just go to that property and, as you said, Swiss cheese. There's always going to be some gap in terms of information. There's also a lot of systems that we utilize in order to take notes on a unit, on a customer, that even if somebody goes on vacation, is out of the office for a while, that that information has continuity between the organization and different layers of management. And so for our team, the way they're trained is to understand who is accessing the properties, how often, when, where. You know, they're as much of a security guard as they are customer service and sales. So it's part of their responsibility.
I'd like to just make it easier for me to understand. Again, the exit is the issue that I'm looking at right now. If someone comes in in the morning, I come in in the morning and it's 11:00 and 9:00 you're closing down, how do you know that I haven't had a heart attack in my unit and I'm still there? How would you know?
So each property has a relatively small office, a rental office with retail merchandise and things of that nature. That is 800 square feet. Half of their time at a property in any given day is spent on the property, walking around, doing lock checks, making sure that the units that are vacant are vacant, the units that are rented are locked. And so the security of it is really something that they're going through. Every morning, they're doing a check. Before they're closing, they're doing a check. If we're seeing anything of that nature, we also have motion sensor lighting. If there's activity in a unit, you'll see a portion of that building with lights on that should not have lights on.
So why wouldn't it make sense, and you probably can tell me, why wouldn't you have them have to swipe out as well?
Well, life safety is one issue with that. And if there is anything that would require somebody to exit a building quickly, we want to make sure that first and foremost, that everybody is safe on the property. Secondly...
You would have an emergency exit probably covered by cameras, right?
All entrances and exits are covered by cameras, yes.
Okay.
I have a question about your customers. Are they required to have some kind of agreement to use the space for a certain amount of time, so many months or so many days or whatever else? So can someone have a very short period, a week, three, two weeks?
So our customer agreements are month-to-month. Minimum amount of time would be one month. Most customers, the average length of stay in today's environment is 14, 16 months. And so some people, you know, are moving and they have a specific amount of time that they're, they think they're going to be out or in transition. What tends to happen is folks who think they're going to be renting end up staying for six months, nine months, or longer. Ultimately, it's a flexible use for storage and it's an easy way to put possessions out of the area. But we do not rent daily, weekly. Minimum timeframe is one month.
If someone is moving from one house to another and they need space to put their furniture or some goods for a week or two weeks, is that something that is allowed in your...
They can use it for one day, but they're going to be renting for one month and paying for one month. So...
Okay.
Whatever their use is, is up to them, but those agreements are standardized.
So based on what we saw, you have more than 500 storage areas, sections, right? So do you allow any customer to have more than one or two and you can open up the space and have bigger space?
So customers are welcome to rent as much space as they need. We rent them unit by unit. So we do not necessarily consolidate units. If somebody needs 1,000 square feet, they can rent five units. And so ultimately, that flexibility, having it month-to-month, means that they have the ability to scale up their needs if they need more space and they have the ability to scale down if that need is reduced.
So you mentioned that there's no overnight parking allowed at the facility. So if on the manager's way out that evening, like what would they do if there's like a car still in the parking lot?
So typically, if they do see something like this, oftentimes, for instance, if a customer's car broke down, they're in communication with that customer. You know, if it's there for one night, they're not necessarily going to have it towed. If it's there, if, you know, oftentimes, a manager will recognize the vehicle of this customer. If somebody is frequenting the property on a consistent basis, managers can see, and especially with this design where your entrance is coming up near the office, managers are going to be able to see that type of activity coming in. The parking is right out front of the office, so they're going to be able to see who is this and, you know, are they a customer or are they not? If they see an individual parking and then walking behind the property to the community there, they would certainly go to them and let them know that, you know, this is for customer use only. If it's something that we see becomes, you know, one, two nights, they would call their supervisor and see if it's appropriate to have it towed.
And do customers like register their license plates when they sign up for a unit? Is there any information on the vehicle?
They do not. We do take identification. So we have driver's license, but as it relates to vehicle license plate, only at properties where we have vehicle storage would that happen.
Thank you.
So Mr. Lang, let me ask you this, a couple things. First is, you refer to yourself as the third-party management company for the applicant. So let's spend a few minutes, moments, not minutes, drilling down on that. Tell us what that means. How do you define that?
Sure. So third-party management is defining the relationship between our company... the relationship between our company, where we provide management services for a third-party owner. The owner of the facility is not an operator. And ultimately, they're looking to our expertise to assist them with the management of the property.
So is there a time issued on that? Is that in perpetuity? Is it one year, six months?
It's on an annual basis, assuming we do a good job. Hopefully, it's in perpetuity.
I see. So it's not like it's a ramp-up. So when a restaurant starts, they bring in corporate people, they train everybody, and then they hand it over. So that's not the situation here?
No, it is not.
Okay. So then, any filings, any contact information that the police and the fire, it's going to be the third-party management company?
It would be the third-party. It would be us, it would be our management team. And ultimately, you know, typically, emergency response may have four or five people listed within an organization in that chain of command.
Now, what about, so, and that's staffing as well. So you're interviewing, you're staffing, they work for your third-party company?
That's correct. Yes, they are on our payroll.
And then, you know, as far as liability goes, though, so I assume, I don't know if there's an owner in the room, somebody's actually the owner of this entity. Well, I guess that must be in the filing. So liability-wise, on the record, I mean, we know who this person is? Is this person background checked? I mean, you know, how do we really know?
In terms of the ownership?
Yeah.
Well, they currently own the property. And so, you know, they've been operating in the municipality for many years. As it relates to, you know, there's insurance that we carry as a management company. There's insurance that we have as an umbrella policy. There's property insurance and liability insurance that also follow along with that.
Okay. And is this the case in all of your properties? Is this common?
In terms of third-party management? It is a very common theme within the industry overall. It is a unique operation. It is an ever-changing industry. And so a number of owners, you know, just like apartment communities, hotels, would prefer to have a professional organization run it versus themselves.
All right, great, thank you. Okay. So let's talk about the size for a second. I don't, for some reason, my notes from the prior meeting, I don't have how many units. And I understand that they come in probably different sizes and shapes. And I also understand that, obviously, you're selling space. So the more space you have, the more revenue you can generate. And I respect that, I really do. So it's 129,750 square feet, I believe, the new building. And that's, unless something's changed, roughly. How many units are in that?
So that is the gross square footage. Within the design of self-storage, you have hallway corridors, elevators, office, stairwells. And so typically, and because of the shape of this parcel, we have a unique-shaped building. That tends to increase the loss factor, essentially. And so with that, I believe we are ending up with somewhere in the range of 90,000 square feet rentable. In a typical market like this, where customers don't necessarily need a hallway closet, they may need an extra bedroom, for instance. Our average unit size, I believe, offhand, is going to be somewhere around 110 square feet, which then equates to somewhere in the range of 800 storage units. The amount of storage units is not necessarily the critical component, because as a building leases up, you tend to see different demand metrics. And the flexibility of storage is also that you can modify these units through that lease-up period to create the best unit mix for market demand.
Gotcha, okay. So, and, you know, right now, a mature facility, let's say a year-old facility, what are you at? 70%? 80% occupancy? And you don't have to divulge any industry stuff, just roughly, I mean, 50%?
No, so there tends to be anywhere between a two- and three-year lease-up period. And so, you know, it's generally evenly spaced across for a second, third year.
All right, whatever. So let's just say you're at 50%. That's 400 units. And you said earlier that you're seeing 10% of your clients on a daily basis. That's 40 spots, you know?
That's 40 spots spread out across 15 hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Still, 19.
It's also loading areas. And so the number of loading areas that are on the site are going to be utilized, the folks that are using the parking spaces. So at 40, you know, that's, you break that out into 10 hours, and you have four cars on site each hour.
But if I remember my old bachelor days, you know, my rent was up, and I moved out at the end of the month. So I would assume that you're busy at a certain time. There's got to be some peak times, right? The end of the month, the beginning of the month, the middle of the month, kind of thing?
Yeah, the activity does bookend the month. And so with that, it is something where, there again, a lot of agreements are signed throughout the week. Moving activity is generated more so Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But again, that is something that, as the property stabilizes, it becomes more of a natural flow as opposed to everybody coming in February 1st and having 80 leases signed. That's not really the case in our business.
All right, fair enough. That's great. Thank you very much. That's all I had.
You had described the aspects of the site itself and the location as being desirable for your business, the demographics of the surrounded area, the relative absence of competition, at least for the kind of quality facility you propose running. And so you know a lot about the business aspect of this. This is an intensification of use on that site. The building which exists today, in many ways, is unobtrusive for a lot of reasons. It does not have the degree of intensity that you propose. So my question to you is, is it necessary to have that big a building with that many units and still operate a profitable business? In which case, you can scale down considerably that which you proposed to us in these meetings, and perhaps in some ways, eliminate some of the other variances which are going to come to fore. But from a pure business perspective, can you build it smaller and still make money?
The design and size of this building, the thought in mind was really to meet where the market demand is in this community. And that's what we saw ultimately was the demand.
Right.
And so as, you know, self-storage expert, you know, I can't really talk to other factors that are involved in this application. What we see is that there's an undersupply of self-storage in the marketplace. Not only that, a typical trade area for us, maybe three miles or five miles, depending on density. Because of the location on Route 22, we tend to see market demand further out from that radius because of functions of, somebody works in this market, they drive here day in and day out. It's a convenient location for them. And so, you know, ultimately, the way we look at the business is, is the community being served with the amount of storage that we see in demand?
But you have operating history of all the facilities which you currently manage or operate. And so you do know those which are profitable and those which are ascending into the profit margin. All I'm asking is, can you build it smaller, still make it a profitable investment for the owner of the property, and make sense for you as a management company?
I understand your question. But ultimately, in my position, I can't make that determination. I'm a manager in this relationship, and I understand what can be done and what cannot be done. In our portfolio, we certainly have locations that are smaller, and we have ones that are larger. In the scenarios where owners, you know, we're looking at the same fundamentals to see that, you know, just because you're going larger doesn't mean it's going to be more profitable. If you're creating something that is too large to serve the market, then there's no sense in having vacant space either. So from that perspective, you know, we feel that the design is there to meet the demand.
And I understand, in this case, you don't want to speak for the owner as you're being the management company. But I do know that with respect to the operating history you have of your own facilities or the ones that you manage, you do have a formula by which you can determine whether these things make sense. And it might be customizable to the individual property, and perhaps then my question is best posed to the owner.
Maybe before you, and I want to ask this of the architect as well, but you addressed in one of your responses to the questions from the board regarding percentage factor of the dead space, the hallways, the walkway, the office space that is not attributable to the rentable space. Describe that a little bit and how that plays a factor into your market analysis.
Yeah, so, listen, I think the traditional self-storage that you would have seen 20 years ago, which is the single-story drive-up, you have a lot of pavement, you have a lot of pervious coverage, but you have no hallways. And so the buildings that you put up are 100% utilized. In a multi-story facility, which ultimately came out of the industry for having better locations instead of being tucked away in the back of an industrial park, more self-storage properties, and certainly ones that you've heard in other applications over the years, are going vertical with multi-story. Again, that creates a need for elevators, stairwells, and hallways. An irregular-shaped building creates less right angles and more hallways. And so as we look at that, and certainly, my colleague on the architecture side has much more information relating to that. But even in a single-story conversion, which we've done of defunct retail buildings, we have a loss factor. And so, you know, real estate taxes are not based on the net rentable. And our insurance is not based on the net rentable. This is on a gross building factor. We try and make the buildings and design them in the most efficient manner so that customers have a clear understanding of how to get around the property. We have interior signage to help with wayfinding and things of that nature. But ultimately, the design is a way to maximize efficiency.
Ultimately, an irregular-shaped building, because of irregular-shaped lot, will yield more unrentable space, more hallways.
That's correct. I, if you have a perfect square or rectangle, I think the most efficient we could get in a multi-story design would be 25% loss. In a scenario like this, we're pushing just over 30%. And so, again, we have gone through iterations to make it more efficient while also providing a clean and clear map for folks to be able to get around.
Fair enough, thank you.
One question. How much of the demand in this area would this facility address? So have you calculated, you believe, it's X number of units?
Yeah. And so from what we've seen, there is continued demand. We have been tracking other potential development sites in the market. The interest rate environment has made it difficult to develop from a real estate perspective, pure and simple. But even with the other applications, and also outside of the municipality, we saw there being a demand. We started working on this a long time ago before the interest rate environment has slowed down further development. So we felt that there was viability with this project, even with the two or three other projects that we were tracking in the marketplace.
So this would address 33% of the demand?
This would probably address 15% of the demand.
All right, I have a question. And I'm just going to ask it. And, Mr. Lang, you did a great job. Thank you for, clearly, you're an expert, third-party management company. But in late 2022, the Bridgewater Township Council passed an ordinance which removed warehousing as a primary use in all commercial zones. So I hadn't thought about this until your own testimony triggered it. And essentially, with your, quote, "business storing inventory." So you do have customers that are businesses, and they store inventory there. So what I'm trying to get at is that this case doesn't create impairment of the intent of the Township Council, which removed warehousing as an effect in Bridgewater Township. So what would happen? And again, this is going to the operations side, not to the planning side. What would happen if you saw a number of business customers come to you and say, "We need to store inventory here, and we know that's a demand because we've had infinite applications for warehousing in front of this own board." Would you reconfigure the 800 approximate spots to start to give this business demand places to store their inventory? Because I am concerned about potentially this becoming a backdoor to a warehousing operation, even if there was no configuration done to your bay doors and whatever. What if you had someone show up and said, "Hey, I make iron railings, and I want to store 50,000 of these iron railings, and I'll pay you X to do it." And that X is 30% above your operation margin. How do we, as a board, prevent your company from reconfiguring those 800 spots to create a backdoor warehouse, which the Bridgewater Township Council has removed as a primary use in this case?
If you have experience from an operations point of view, certainly, it's a.
And that's what it speaks to. And you put on the record that you have 50 locations in 10 states. How do you handle a business customer that comes to you and wants to store a large parcel or a large inventory component, and they want you to reconfigure your layout to accommodate that? What would happen? How can I tell the Township Council of Bridgewater that we prevented any backdoing of warehousing here in this application?
No, it's certainly a valid concern. I think through our business operations, there are a number of ways that we have the ability to exclude that type of use. There are a number of ways. A, a customer who's looking for large amounts of space automatically starts to raise flags. The manager starts to interview and ask more questions about the customer's use. Also, because of the camera and access control, we have full visibility on what is coming into the building, even if we're not there. So a customer that is maybe not even telling us that they want to take on that much space could rent it online. But we will see that type of activity occurring.
No, you testified that this is a part of your business, that you have business storing inventory. So, I mean, I'm just saying, they come to you, this is a business, they want to store inventory. And let's say they buy 30 units. And they want to reconfigure those 30 units because they have effectively found an arbitrage, a storage arbitrage, and it's an arbitrage of our ordinances. And I want to make sure that I can tell the Township Council, we didn't allow a local arbitrage to happen between storage at a warehouse and storage at a facility such as yours.
So I think there's also a differentiation between traditional warehouse, which is maybe some of the use cases.
Well, that's prohibited in New Jersey. That's my point.
Understood. And so a number of the factors that you would find in a warehouse, you will not find in self-storage. There are no forklifts. The lift or the elevator between floors is a large passenger elevator. There are, again, small carts that you can use. But the operation of a self-storage facility would not be conducive to warehousing of any of them.
If I could just stop you, because those are great answers. So would you be willing to stipulate that no forklifts will be used in this operation?
100%.
Okay. And now, you're a third-party manager. You testified you have a one-year contract. This is going to run with the approval of the property. So we're going to stipulate that no forklifts are going to be utilized at this property.
That's correct. And there are other factors, obviously, that we can.
Let's hear them, because that's a great answer. Let's keep expanding on that. How do we protect this from?
We've done a lot of warehouse applications. The number one thing is ceiling height. That's what they're looking for now. And you don't have that here. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But you could have it if you remove partitions in these, because you've already talked about reconfiguring layouts.
Well, that's horizontal, but not vertical.
Yeah, we're also, the type of racking that a traditional warehouse user is going to want to have, you're not going to have in this facility. You may have shelves and even a consumer has that ability to put up plastic shelves. In our rules and regulations, you're not allowed to modify the space on your own and nor would we be modifying the space for a user like that. So while I certainly understand the concern, in practice and in operation, it would not happen.
And not only is the ceiling height about 10 feet we're talking about here, but there are columns spaced every 10 feet that
Yeah, absolutely. That's right. And so from an engineering perspective, I can't tell you exactly where the columns are. I know that they're tucked away and so that they're not obstructing hallways. And ultimately, the floor load of a self-storage is there to support the contents that our customers are storing. But outside of that, we do not have, in this specific instance with this property, there's no vehicles that can enter the building and, again, no forklifts that would be on site.
Just to put this on the record, 129,000 of total, 129,000 square feet of total usable space. If this was a warehouse application and it got approved, you would have a renter in one day. I mean, so to say that the height isn't really marketable, it's untrue. 129,000 feet in Bridgewater, New Jersey would probably lease in a day. So, and it's open to date and I'll withdraw it, but with that said, you know, I do want to make sure that the intent here is not the impairment of what the Township Council put through in October of 2022. I think it's 126-143. And I'm going to ask every one of your witnesses the same question and how we prevent this the storage arbitrage, and it's an ordinance arbitrage. And we have to make sure, and I think the forklift is a great way to start, but we have to ask ourselves with each witness, how are we preventing this arbitrage from happening of our local ordinances? Because we're one of the few towns that have done this. We've outlawed this, so.
We will be happy to address any conditions of approval that are reasonable, that won't impair our operations to prevent it.
As we go along, yeah, this is, you know, a work in progress. Anything that would help me go back to the Township Council and say, "We upheld the intent"
Sure.
From that ordinance change in, I think, October 2022.
Sure.
All right. Any other board questions?
If an applicant wants to change dimensions of a space, can't do that.
No.
But when you build it, that's what's going to be there forever.
When we build it, they will come.
Okay.
Yeah, so
What is the largest space you would be renting?
I believe at this facility, the largest space would be 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep, so 200 square feet, typically the largest size that we offer in a facility of this design.
Would you also be willing to state that you would never reconfigure any of the existing spaces?
That would be a tough thing to
I think that's a slippery slope because there are scenarios, for instance, that we deal with now at other properties where the average unit size was designed to be 90 square feet. And through the demand of the marketplace, we see that 100, 150 square feet is in higher demand. So we have the ability to combine a unit. It's something that, we take a lot of time and effort in the planning and the design of this to hopefully match the market and to create the right target. It's been very seldom that we come across a scenario where we need to modify a building in order to meet the demand that we've missed.
Almost never.
Rarely.
And you would not have a problem agreeing to that, right?
Self-storage is built in a manner so that it is, to a degree, flexible. Now, the column spacing, the doors that are there, the way that these are built, interior, does not make it easy. It's not a simple task. It's costly. It's something that we don't want to be doing either.
Is there an acceptable maximum
Oh, yeah, maximum or minimum.
Since we can't, since you can't get a vehicle in here anyways, we're not leaving, we don't, they don't need to be huge, you're not using forklifts anyway, is there an acceptable maximum unit size?
And we could also approach this as minimum number.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, that is something that can be accommodated. You know, in our portfolio of all these properties, minimum size might be, call it five by five with half height, so those might be considered a locker. In this market with the density of population that we have here, that's not a highly desirable type of unit. In this scenario, our smallest unit size would be five feet by five feet and eight and a half feet tall. The largest-sized unit, which I believe we have in the unit mix, is 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep, being 200 square feet.
You're still projecting, and we haven't gone over a lot of the old variances yet, but you're still projecting to do three levels, three stories?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else on the board? Mr. Burr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lang had a, actually had a question. I think it was in follow-up to one of your responses to Mr. Kulak, where you had mentioned that you have some facilities that are smaller than this, some that are larger in size. Early on in your testimony, I think you mentioned you have nine facilities in New Jersey with maybe a 10th one on the way this summer.
That's correct.
Can you give us an idea of what those size ranges typically involve from the low end up to the high end?
Yeah, so, and bear in mind, the size, shape, construction, layout have been evolving over the course of self-storage industry. The industry is relatively new, as you think about this. The first storage units were popping up in the 1960s. So when you think about this as an asset class, it's still relatively new. With that in mind, properties that were built in the 90s and early 2000s tend to be smaller. So in New Jersey, our smallest location is about 45,000 square feet, maybe 350 units, somewhere in that range. The largest facility that we have is 110,000 square feet rentable. The one that's under construction is going to be in the 95,000 square foot range.
Gross or rentable?
Rentable.
So when you say 110 rentable, that would be compared to the 90 rentable for this unit? Is that what we're, are we talking apples to apples?
That property happens to sit in a more suburban marketplace than Bridgewater. It is a single-story, and so there are driveways between 15 buildings that comprise of that 110,000 square feet.
And the, you said a 95 and a 110. Of those two that are comparable in size to this one, what does the parking look like on facilities like that?
That's really a great benefit of self-storage. Typically in self-storage, we're seeing parking one space per 10,000 square feet. And so within our portfolio, not just within New Jersey, we have locations that have probably one space for every 12,000 or 13,000 square feet. The, there again, it is retail conversions that had, you know, 45,000 square foot buildings sitting on six acres tend to have a little bit more parking. But I think from the 19, I think we actually added some, the parking spaces that we have on the redesign more than accommodate the demand that we would be seeing on a regular basis.
Okay. Let me ask you a question about the hours of operation. I think you had mentioned 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I heard Monday to Friday.
So the 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM would be customer access availability. That would be seven days a week?
Oh, that is seven days a week.
Customer access is seven days a week.
That's where I, so that's where I went off.
Okay, yeah. And then office hours where a manager would be, would be Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 6:00, and then Saturday, 10 to 2:00 or something along
So it is a seven-day operation, six to nine?
From a customer perspective, yes.
Customer perspective.
Yes, and that is standardized across every competitor in the marketplace today.
And at your other facilities with the exterior lighting, 9:00 PM cutoff in terms of, you know, customers being able to access their units, do the exterior lights go off at that time and hour after? When did the exterior lights get extinguished?
That is actually something that we've had to modify on occasion based on municipality interest. We typically have photocells on lighting so that they turn on at night just for visibility. Certainly this time of year, lights are turning on at 4:30. And so, you know, I understand their sensitivity regarding lighting for vehicles on 22. I think, you know, the team has addressed that. But ultimately, there would be a few lights around the building, just around entrances, exits for security purposes, and then a fire lane around the back that would be motion censored for that need.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, we're going to open up to members of the public. First up, we had an objectors attorney here last time. It was Ms. Westlake, I believe. Is she here? Hi. Wanted to give you first bite at the apple. You could just state your name again for the record.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. My name is Rosalind Westlake, and I'm here representing Arthur Self-Storage. Just a few questions, Mr. Lang. Thank you, that was a very interesting testimony. You said this is an annual service agreement that you set up with the owner of the property?
That's correct.
So what would happen if the owner decided not to renew that? Then the space would be unmanaged or managed by the owner?
If they choose to manage it themselves, yes, but ultimately, we have a deep relationship here, and so if there were to be a different management company, there would be a transition of services.
But there wouldn't be anything to stop the owner from having constructed the building and then unless there were significant restrictions on the structural component from redoing the entire interior of the building and changing the support structure, correct?
I think financially, there'd be many reasons why that would not happen.
But it's possible.
Many things are possible.
Okay. I also have a question with respect to the docks. Do you reserve dock time? Because there's only the two loading docks. So what happens if there's a conflict? Five people want to use the loading docks all at once?
Well, there are two loading docks, but there are five loading areas. So in our experience, given the size and the demand, not only are those areas there, but oftentimes people are utilizing the space with a pickup truck or a van or even a light vehicle, which they could, of course, be utilizing the parking spaces for that as well.
So you don't do any reservation of the docks to control that?
We've never had a need for that.
Okay, all right, thank you. So with respect to basically the metrics that you used to identify this particular location and how to design the site, can you help me understand what metrics you used? The population, you mentioned radius, that kind of thing. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, in our experience, we see that, we look at it national level, regional level, local level. And so the various metrics are there is number of households, population, population growth, household formation, and not only that, but again, the 22 corridor brings additional demand from outside the immediate trade area.
Okay, so then if you're using all of those metrics, what specific metric did you use? I mean, you mentioned a three-to-five mile radius is used sometimes. Is that the radius that you used here? Was it a three-mile radius, a four-mile radius?
No, actually, in this scenario, we use more drive time, again, because of that corridor and the ability for customers to access the site. In a typical scenario, if higher density, if you're talking about a Manhattan or borough area, you're having customers that are coming from one, maybe two miles. That's more determined by drive time and accessibility than it is by pure radius. So ultimately, we use these metrics as a way to frame the scenario, but at the end of the day, the drive time is really what creates the marketplace.
Okay, so the marketplace that you've identified or created through these metrics is then translated into a building size?
Unmet demand.
I'm not sure I understand that. What does that mean?
We have the ability to track existing supply in the market. We have an understanding of market occupancies based on rental rates, based on concessions, and we come back into an overall market occupancy. From there, we understand in a municipality or New Jersey or even within central New Jersey, what the usage is for the space.
So you backed into the space using the metrics? So you chose a space of 129,000 square feet and backed the metrics into that?
Yes.
Okay. Why did you select 129,000 square feet?
Ultimately, the way the site is laid out and how this is, that was the unmet demand that we saw we could help with this new supply.
Okay. If you took a different building size, could you back into the building size with those same metrics?
Yeah, if we could go five stories, we would still have that unmet demand, so
Right, I understand that there's an unknown unmet demand. I guess my question is, if you did a 45,000 square foot space similar to the smallest site that you manage, which presumably is profitable, you could back metrics into it to show that you would be meeting some demand in Bridgewater, correct?
Because I don't understand what back metrics into
Well, he, using his term of backing in.
Your example of putting 45,000 square foot, it's a totally different market. What we have in Manchester Township in Ocean County is not relatable to this site, this township, or this county.
Okay, is that because you have a metric that says there's unmet demand of X and we can meet 70% of that because that's what we would like to do as a business? Or are you saying there's unmet demand of X? We have the ability to build a building of this size and therefore we will be able to meet 30% of the demand?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I guess my question is, is there a way to design or to identify a building size that will meet demand, obviously not all of it, but will meet demand that doesn't take up the entire property? Well, okay, I'm sorry, 86% of the property.
I'm sorry?
It takes up 86% of the property. But I'm just having trouble understanding this whole concept of having these metrics and identifying this demand and, as in your own words, you said backed into the size of the building in order to identify which metrics you would use so that because you're being presented with the option of 129,000 square foot building, you therefore say, "The metric I'm going to use is five-mile building, you therefore say the metric I'm going to use is five-mile radius, or drive time of three minutes, or 10 minutes, or an hour. It sounds like your metrics can kind of be identified to fit whatever building size you're presented with. Would that be accurate?
Just for the record, the building, the lot coverage is 46%, not 86%.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the building design shape that is being presented is a best-in-class facility. The look, the design, the size is also a best-in-class design for the municipality of this nature, where customers are going to desire that. In doing so, in creating a roof height from various metrics that we're trying to adhere to, we are going down, not going up higher. And so through that, there are construction costs that, you know, ultimately, there are financial decisions in a business like this.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I'm not a financier, nor do I understand metrics all that well. Let's see. I think that's all I have for this witness. Thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Westlake?
Thank you.
Chairman, a couple of redirect questions.
Absolutely.
Mr. Lang, one of the questions Ms. Westlake asked you was about a concern that the owner goes and self-manages and has no, the board has no control over a complete redesign of the interior of the building. You're not a specialist in land use or zoning, but would it surprise you to learn that if a structural change is proposed, that that would have to come back to this board?
That would be my expectation.
You were also asked a question, I think I understood the premise, about backing into the market based on occupancy, but you also testified that even at this size, you would still likely, in your estimation, only be capturing approximately 15% of the market demand?
That's correct.
So approximately 85% of the market would still be, there would still be an unmet need, and likely, how does that result, or what would the result be for existing facilities out there by your presence?
One interesting component to self-storage is that just because new supply has hit a market does not mean that competitors start losing customers. This has been a concern that we've talked to partners, investors internally, externally. Customers do not move and take up a day of their time putting their contents into a truck, loading it up, unloading it into a new facility because the rate is $5 less, $10 less. A stabilized property remains stabilized even through new competition. If there are other factors of reasons why a customer leaves a facility, typically that's relating more towards that facility's own operations versus having new supply and new competition in a marketplace.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have objectors' attorneys present? All right, so now I'm going to open it up to members of the public. It's a familiar face.
Been here before.
Yeah, once or twice. Good to see you.
In three years. I sure will. Evans, Hume Nick, 3 Crest Drive, Bound Brook, New Jersey. I'm in that development, just on the other side of Route 22.
And just for the record, you're a former zoning board member, correct?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Mr. Lang, let me ask a question. Have you taken a look at the property itself? Have you walked the property? Have you seen it? Because sometimes we have people come in and they make estimates and they come up with a bunch of plans. Like in the administrative office, I saw a big pile of documents, you know, so big today. Have you seen the property?
Yes.
Okay. And you've got experience, a lot of experience in this area with warehouse, with this type of storage. Okay. So a lot of things that you, maybe you might hear and you might not realize, things like this do happen, even if they only haven't happened yet. We had a trucking company that at one time wanted to open up some of their space, and it turned out they had some material that was hazardous material. They didn't know it themselves, but they were a place where trucks would come 5:00 in the morning and swap.
Excuse me, is this testimony? I just wanted to clarify. Just giving some background to get to a question.
Yeah, this is, a little historical information if you want. Where trucks would come at 5:00 in the morning, wake up a lot of people in the neighborhood, and swap goods, and they might move it into storage, and then another truck would come and pick it up because they deliver further into the city or whatever. And that was hazardous material. Well, they didn't put it in, and they didn't like the, they didn't even know that they had hazardous material coming in on their trucks. Now, there's other types of material or things that could happen that haven't happened yet but might happen. When you're putting this facility up, is the person who wants it built, do they want to use it as another source of income? Let me give you an example. We had a series of time where we had a bunch of co-location towers.
Before we get to your next question, your backup or your lead-in to the first question?
Yes.
About hazardous materials?
Yes.
Is the question, how do you know if someone's storing hazardous materials?
Well, that is my question, and let me expand it to make it easier for you to answer it. You said you had documentation to make sure people didn't bring certain types of hazardous material into their cubicle, or whatever we want to call it, their space. Is that what you're trying to eliminate, things like hazardous materials?
Yes.
Way back, a long time ago, in 1993, in Jersey City, a company that had a warehouse that actually ordered compressed gas in cylinders. But it wasn't ordinary compressed gas, it was hydrogen, that eventually went into the World Trade Tower, and it was used inappropriately in the World Trade Tower when that first explosion occurred. Is that something that might be included, as well as things like chemicals that might be hazardous and cause a fire?
Yes, that's correct.
Good. How about co-location towers? Is that something that when people buy the space and they're going to, they want to raise the property or the building that's there and put another one in, do they plan on, if necessary, use that piece of property as a staging area, like for American Water, who apparently puts about four or five vehicles on the property in the morning? So they're using it, and I'm sure they're charging a fee for that, whoever has the building now, because they have to pay insurance to have some other service done on the property. Does that make sense to you?
I'm not sure, certain that I understand the question.
The question is, is the property going to be used for anything else besides the intended purpose of what you're building it for, or is it going to be used for something like a staging area, or a place where people can meet and get together and, let's say, swap product from one truck to another? Is there going to be co-location towers, which you can generate an income from? I'm not trying to give anybody the idea, but is that a way that you've been able to mitigate some of the costs in the places that you've already established, by people using it for a different purpose?
The answer is, this is a legal question. This application involves one use. If you were to approve it, it would not be an approval of any other use, including cellular towers, outdoor storage, vehicle storage, anything like that.
Okay.
If in the future, wanted to do something like that, they'd have to come back to this board.
Well, the zoning that's going to be putting on, putting on the property now, is what is going to stay with the property.
The zoning could change.
It could if somebody applied for it.
Mr. Hume, you could ask him in any of the 50 properties he manages, does that occur?
Has that been done?
Putting cellphone towers on the building?
Anything else that people have, that they're using for the purpose of storing goods, which I think automatically is something that you're going to put in while you're moving, somebody's moving in, somebody's moving out, somebody's going to college, things are coming into the area. Does that deter?
Folks are not conducting business
Right.
On the property or in the storage unit, they are not using this space as a flea market, or swap meat, or anything of that nature. We do not allow that at our properties.
Okay. Little sidebar maybe for you. In Bound Brook, there's a bakery called Mediterranean. And that's in Bound Brook, and they have a board, and they have a nice, small piece of property. It could be appropriate for so many, many other things, but somebody applied for that property. They wanted to make it into a skating, a skating arena. You would never imagine it, that this bakery could turn in, this small area could turn into something to have enough parking and enough for an ice skating area inside. So I've seen things that I never thought I would see on the zoning board, what things can become over a period.
But they had to apply for it.
They had to apply for it, and it's still up in the air. So I bring it up, and you know, you may not think it's very likely that somebody's going to bring hydrogen into the property and use it to blow up the mall. But let's say, you know, we talk about what a great location it is. It's great because it's centralized. You can come right off 2278, you can come down 287, 202, 206. You've got so many roads here. What a nice place to take four or five boxes, or things that look like computers, but what they have are, say, fentanyl in it, or some other narcotic that's been brought in. So when people are asking about switching cargo, let's say, from one place to another, or one truck to another, there's a real serious need for that. And by the way, on Route 22, I asked if you've looked at the area around here, not only the property, but there are other places that are trying to do warehousing in the area, and that are trying to do things like, whatever we would call this, you know, the, what do you call this thing that you're doing?
Self-storage.
Self-storage, okay. And we talk about it, it's, you know, for homeowners, let's say, and the local property owners. But I believe you also said that you're going to keep the place closed on the weekends. Now, that might be nice for some people, but I think that's a time where a lot of, a lot of people that are moving from one place to another.
Actually, they didn't say that. They said it's a 24-hour facility for, I'm sorry.
Did you not allude to the fact that you are closed on weekends?
Facility for customers.
We, we do have office hours on Saturday. We would be, the office, there would not be a manager staffed on a Sunday. But again, to concern, these storage units are constructed in a manner where there is an open-air ceiling for each storage unit. These storage units do not go all the way to the ceiling of the top. And so on top, for security purposes, there's like a mesh wire, security-type fencing on top. Our managers have mirrors on telescoping poles that they walk by. They have cameras that they're able to look over top. So when they're doing inspections, they are looking for items that are not allowed within our property or use from customers. And in those instances, our agreement allows us to terminate with any reason we choose to, that agreement. So these agreements are written in a manner where us as the management company, representing the owner in this instance, have the ability to manage the site and keep the property secure and safe. And in the examples that you've provided here, those are scenarios where our team is trained to look out for, to identify, and ultimately, if it comes to a scenario where we need to alert the authorities, we're in very good standing with great relationships with a lot of the emergency service personnel in any municipality where we're serving.
Great. Way back when, 1962, I think, is when this building was first built, the building that's there now. My family's been living there and using the school system and all the services in the area, because it was sort of like toward the country when you were out toward Somerville and Bridgewater and that. And lately, it's turned into, well, maybe it's an outline community for Essex County, or Hudson County, or whatever.
You do need to get to your question without...
I know, but I like to hear myself talk too, so I'm sorry. I'll hold back on that part. The point being is that things are getting a lot more crowded out here, and we put shopping centers in, and one thing leads to another, and that's great. And I think that's important. I'm asking the question because the Department of Transportation, about four years ago, allowed an entrance from the Hampton Inn, which is a hotel about a mile and a half down the road, and it has a road that curves over Route 22, and that road is Foothill Road and Ronson Road. I'm trying to give you a definition so you have an idea. Ronson Road is a very small road, but Route 22 is a very wide-open road, very similar to the facility. Maybe in 1962, you were, it was allowed to have an egress from a parking, from a driveway. But you couldn't do it, you could do it then, maybe, on Route 22.
What is your question?
The question is, are you going to maintain the two driveways that you have that go out to Route 22, and are egresses onto Route 22? That, of course, creates a little bit of a dangerous situation with being slow. Okay.
In my opinion, that is sufficient egress for a storage facility. However, we have traffic engineers and more studies that can provide professional feedback.
Okay. I know, and the reason I'm asking is because we've, it was almost approved that way. They went back to DOT, and the DOT says, no, you can't come out of the Hampton Inn on Route 22 because it's not an allowed exit from the, and everything was left to one smaller exit on Ronson Road. I'm going to, I'm giving you that maybe as a bit of information. You don't want to go down the road too far and find out you can't do that. I have a feeling that I, what I see on the maps, it looks like you're able to get onto Route 22 now without, without any consideration made to that. People coming off, or coming out of the facility.
I have questions for the engineer who talked about the site design. This is the operator of the facility, and not as qualified as the engineer with respect to ingress and egress.
Okay.
Nor did he testify about it.
Okay, I understand that. You know, well, let me just bring up one more point so that if there's going to be an objection, one more point. We always hear about 100-year storms. We're not going to have this kind of rain and all this here crazy stuff. It's for the engineer?
Yeah, it's an engineering question.
Okay. I hope I can stay, and it's been very interesting. I appreciate it. And I hope everybody here, I hope everybody here appreciates all these people coming out and doing all this work and evaluating what's being said, and this is not their area of expertise. Certainly not mine, but everybody wants to help out because we want to see the right thing done. I want to thank everybody, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Good seeing you. Thank you. Whoever's ready, come on up. Ready golf. Just have your name and your address, please. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Nora O'Neill Cole, 60-year Bridgewater resident. Thank you. I live around a corner from this guy on Voselore Avenue, right down the street. I have two questions, and I believe they're about operations. I'm a retired UPS driver, and I have driven into storage facilities because the owner of the, or the renter of the unit gave UPS the code and unlocked their unit, and taken things out on my hand truck and brought them back to the truck, and done this in multiple units every day. So is there a way we want to not, is there a way you can eliminate that, or, you know, make that not a thing?
There is a way that any package deliveries would be delivered to the office.
These are packages being picked up. The woman had a tape business, and she would store things.
Can I just call a timeout here? Can we swear you in? Because I think that's a pretty interesting point of testimony that you're providing, and I want to get that on the record properly.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that any testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help to God.
I do.
And you're going to be giving testimony as you were, you're going to ask a question? And you're going to be giving testimony as you were, you're going to ask a question at the end of this. And just so you know, at the end of this case, you'll be able to speak for or against as long as you want.
Okay.
But right now, you have a question on deliveries.
I have two questions about operation.
And you have, and you have experience in this fact because you were a UPS driver. Okay.
I literally did this.
Gotcha, thank you.
So you would just take your hand truck and I understand it's not a drive-up facility, but I would, you know, I guess, and what would prevent?
Were you provided an individual code for yourself or were you using a customer's code?
Customer's code. They would give it to us and it was being our diet. And then when we'd go to the unit, the lock would be there.
And in that scenario, we would see that we have a regular pickup coming from a UPS driver.
So is that not allowed?
It is not allowed. Individuals must use their own code. They're, they're not, it is in our rules and regulations.
So if I rented a unit, I couldn't give it to my brother to go pick something up? Like how do you?
Listen, you're the one on, on the agreement. And so, you know, ultimately, when we see your brother coming in, we're going to ask that individual's name, their unit, their relationship. You know, our managers take great care of the facility and want to make sure that they're not at risk, being an employee who is there day in and day out. And so that scenario is unique. We often have deliveries coming to our facilities and picking up from our facilities. In our business, those occur from the office.
Right.
So sir, would you agree if there were an approval to a condition that any deliveries to the facility from, from any courier would have to go to the office and not be permitted to be dropped at any of the storage locations?
We would be open to that and, and in addition, we'd be happy to put small signage with deliveries, you know, to the office.
Okay. And my second question is you mentioned that the drive time was a big metric for you picking this specific area, this specific location. And Bridgewater has a lot of bigger houses with lots of garages. And I'm wondering if your drive time metric isn't really serving Bridgewater. Like how is that serving Bridgewater if the metric is drive time? So you're just bringing other people in? Like how is that serving Bridgewater?
No, it's absolutely serving Bridgewater, but just because you're serving Bridgewater doesn't mean that you're not serving the next town over. And ultimately, that's, that's what I mean by drive time.
Right.
It is, it is certainly, and, and the unit mix that we're proposing and designing in this scenario is meant for the local community. We understand that there are larger homes here. Again, a larger home does not need another hallway closet. It needs another bedroom or it needs another garage-sized space. And so ultimately, as we think about the design of a facility, it's to maximize efficiency and ultimately the interest for that community. It does us no good to create something that is not going to be, have the demand from that local community.
So as part of your metric, was it included the massive amounts of apartments being built in Somerville and Bound Brook and Raritan? Is that all part of the metric to bring people to this specific location?
I mean, if we see housing starts or multifamily starts that are going on in a community, then...
I mean, apartments are going to need more storage than houses, right? So I mean, I wonder what the percentage is relative to like how many people living in apartments need storage relative to how many people in houses need storage?
We operate facilities across the 10 states where we're at in, in markets that have household incomes from 40,000 annual to 120,000. The one scenario is that everybody needs storage. So, you know, from that perspective, you know, whether somebody drives from the town over or is three blocks away, ultimately, we're still there to serve the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Just your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Ashley Shredies. I lived at, I live at 52 Glenn Road. Basically, the proposed facility will be in my backyard as well as several residents who have joined me today. I understand that you want questions right now, is that correct? No statements, right?
Yes.
I want to make sure I understand the assignment. Okay. Just a couple of ques, a couple of questions here. I like the information that you shared with regard to all of the facilities you have in the New Jersey area, but are any currently positioned in a neighborhood or home residential area?
Yes.
Which one or ones?
We have a location in Hamilton, New Jersey that has residential, multifamily and single-family on two sides. We have...
Can I, may I ask, when was that built?
2020.
Okay. Has there been any data that shows a decrease or increase in property value of those areas?
He's not an expert in property valuation of real estate. You know something anecdotal, but I certainly wouldn't admit it as expert testimony.
I'm going to assume that property values there have gone up 30% since we've opened there.
What do you think attributes to that?
Housing demand.
Yeah, but for the same reason that she can't ask the question, he can't put the testimony on the record as an expert. Now, if you want to speculate...
It's not expert testimony.
Okay.
Yeah, this is all guesswork, so.
You know, if you wanted to say that the National Realtor Association in the last three years has annualized return of 30%, you're certainly welcome to do that because I think that's approximate. But if you want to put that back on the record as an approximate valuation, absolutely.
That is approximate. I, I don't know the home values there and, and ultimately, housing demand is, is very high.
Understood. I, I may get yelled at for this one, but I'll just ask. What about crime rates or theft or other issues like that?
You've got to have a question.
I'm sorry?
What's the question?
Uh, the question is, has there been an increase or decrease in crime rates?
I cannot speak to crime rates in a community. I can say that our facilities are secure, they're well-lit, we have alarm systems and ultimately, we run a very secure property. I can't comment on a neighborhood.
Just one other question. I know we touched on this a little bit. I just want to make sure I understand. As far as doing like some sort of background check or identification of the people that are renting from you, are any background checks done?
We do run names through what's called an OFAC check. And so that will show if an individual is on any watch list. And, and so that is standard practice for us as well as taking photo identification.
And what happens if they've been convicted of a crime?
I mean, if they're not on the OFAC list, which is, you know, terrorist watch list, I mean, convicted of a crime is a broad statement.
Understood. Well, what would happen in that case if, if they were on the OFAC list?
We would deny access. And ultimately, I mean, in those scenarios, we haven't come across that. We do run that through a federal website. But again, we are involved in the community from a emergency response perspective. We are, we host events for, or we sponsor events for police departments for emergency response. And from that perspective, we've got great relationships with those departments in the communities that they serve and we serve. And from that perspective, if there are issues, we communicate and participate in anything that they're requesting.
Has there been any incidents with your district managers or other personnel being bribed to include certain items in your storage facilities?
No.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to ask the witness a couple of questions.
Sure, go.
You started your first question.
I need to...
She's never been sworn in.
I'll ask the question then.
Okay, you can do that.
Your first question, premise that you live on Glenn Road.
Yes, sir.
And you indicated that this was in your backyard, but there's a highway that separates this property from Glenn Road, correct?
Yes, but I can visibly see it. I'm sorry?
The highway is in fact the backyard.
Well, I have my backyard and then, yeah, my house backs up to the highway.
You also asked a question with the premise that this particular application is situated in a residential area. To your knowledge, this property is not in a residential zone, correct?
To, actually it is because there's actually houses on either side.
From a zoning perspective, do you know if this property is in a residential zone or is it in commercial?
No, I'm not an expert on the property, but I am a concerned resident and it will be an eyesore from my backyard. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask a question as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
Ma'am, can you comment on the fact, you know, in the prior meeting, there was some testimony or a question, I think, I think it was questioned by a resident that said there's a pipe that exits on the westbound side that spills out to the eastbound side. Do you know of any pipes that are in your neighborhood that are spilling out water? And can you comment on that at all?
So I'm not aware of the pipes, to be honest, but in my statement, which I will give at a later date, I will include some information. So every time our, it rains, our basements get flooded and our backyards get flooded and rain comes in. So back in 2021, IDA was giving us a lot of rain. I think we had like four inches in like an hour or something crazy like that. And we have a, an outdoor front drain. We also have an indoor front drain inside our basement. Water was still coming through. The recent storms that we had as well, our drains and pumps were going on and on and on forever. We actually have two pumps in my home.
I have to stop you.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah. It just, it was really like a yes, no, but at the end, you can certainly, and you can ask more questions of the...
No, I'm good, but thank you.
This is, thank you for your questions.
I appreciate it. Thanks, everyone.
Clarify something?
Sure.
You said this, was customer access 24/7, correct?
No, customer access 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
I'm sorry. It's a seven-day-a-week?
Seven-day-a-week, not 24 hours.
Okay. And the managers are there what days, all days?
Monday through Friday, normal business hours, 9:30 to 6:00 PM and then Saturday...
Really is nobody minding the store on the weekend?
On Sunday.
On Sunday?
On, on Sunday, nobody would be, office hours would not be open. But on Saturday, yes, there would be office hours.
Okay. And I think you said earlier that you're going to have two managers there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not at the same time?
There is overlap between there, but if you think about those hours, you know, you, you probably end up with roughly 60 hours of staffing in a week. And so for a full-time employee, you'll have, you know, roughly 20 hours of overlap.
Thank you.
So at the October hearing, you testified, at least my notes say you testified, that the hours of having someone in the office, your employees, would be from nine to six on Monday to Friday and 10 to 2 on Saturday and closed on Sunday. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I, yes, that is correct. In terms of saying 9:30 today versus nine then, again, it's something that we match the market. And so when we are actually opening the, the store for business, we're again taking a survey of when they're open. Now, market conditions change. We have recently identified a large operator in our industry that is now open till 7:00 at night. We don't typically see much activity past 6:00 PM and so that's a business decision in terms of office hours.
All right. One item on a question that you asked. The, the facility you said was in a residential area in Hamilton. Is that a three-story facility?
It is in a, a commercial business corridor that happens to be adjacent and abuts back to residential. And that, that is, that happens to be a single story. However, we do have multi-story facilities that are next to or adjacent also to residential.
Hi. Just your name and address, please.
Deborah Fernandez in 46 Glenn Road. Right behind the building. Yes, the highway's there. So for, I have a question about the market. For the analysis, you stated that, you know, the area needs this kind of storage unit. Did that include all of the new storage units that are in the area? There's just down 22 in Branchburg, they opened up new ones and Bound Brook, there's new ones?
It did account for them.
And what about any new ones? Because it always seems like once something's big, there's always a surplus. And then they're empty.
It tends to be the bias as well. So as you start to recognize them, you notice them more frequently. It's a, if you buy a red car and all of a sudden you see a lot of red cars. So, so part of that is just identifying what that is. I would say the other scenario is that, that these types of buildings have, again, existed at least in this market since the mid-'80s. And over the evolution of the business as well as the use of real estate, they tend to evolve in their locations and design.
And instead of like maybe taking an existing area that has a storage unit and redoing that to make it the climate control, is there a reason why this area versus something that already has it?
You know, that's something that I'm not really qualified to speak on, but yeah.
And I mean, it is going to be much larger and intrusive in the area. Right now, it's, you know, the building's nice and putting something much larger.
I guess beauty's in the eye of the beholder. It's, it's, this is a, a well-designed building using, using high-quality materials. And, and from that perspective, it's been designed.
And for the 15% market share, is that the existing market share or what's out there?
No, that's what we saw as in unmet demand and how much of that unmet demand would this building supply?
And then if, I guess, you know, the concern is just like if it does become vacant. And like if it's a third-party agreement, you know, what's the...
This is, this, this development is financially feasible for the demand. This is not a, a use or a construction that you walk away from. And in terms of active management on the site, even for a, a mom-and-pop operator that own a single facility, there's great care that, that we take of the facility and the relationship that we have with owners. They've maintained this, this office that is currently there for, for many, many years. And, and in terms of the, again, the materials, the design, the thought that went into designing this, as well as the maintenance that we'll take care of as an active manager, is going to continue to be of high quality. To, to walk away from that investment or to ignore it is, I mean, it's, it's just not in the realm of feasibility.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Speaking about your relationship, this isn't your, this would not be your first facility with this ownership group, correct?
No, this is our third.
And that, that relationship dates back quite a while?
Yeah, it, it dates back 30 years.
Do you have one follow-up question to what the woman was asking, one of our residents? When you're looking out your backyard as a resident and you see something new, which is a complete departure from that which exists today, much more substantial structure, it's going to be a different use, it's going to create different patterns. It's not just a matter of... It's not just a matter of what's in the eye of the beholder. As a zoning board, we look at the resident's concerns and we look at their view of the world and try and represent their interests as much as we try and comply with all the rules and regulations that we have to. So I'm a little concerned that it's not just a subjective view, it's rather concerns that the neighborhood expresses, and we need to hear those.
I think that's a very valid point and, you know, quite honestly, I apologize that it was taken that way. It is, again, a community-based business. We're not there to force self-storage to anybody. In fact, we're only going there because there's demand from the area. But again, in choosing the materials and the design, it's to make the aesthetic as appealing as we can.
No, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kulek. It's going on 9 o'clock. Why don't we take a 15-minute break? We'll reconvene at 9:15. Thank you. Please approach. Okay. But we're absolutely gonna take more questions. If you have them, you can wait till 9:15? Just till 9:15. You can be next. Thank you. All right, we're gonna take a quick break. Thank you.
All right, we're going to reconvene if we could. A quick roll call, please, Roger.
Here.
Uh, here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 All right, thank you.
I'm here.
And Mr. Burke.
Here.
All right. Picking up where we left off, we're taking questions from the public. And sir, you wanted to be next.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Kurzeha. I'll spell it K-U-R-Z-E-J-A. I lived in the community for 47 years. I'm a practicing attorney in the state of New Jersey. I don't have an objector at this point in time.
Could we just get your address?
Sure. My office address? I'm going to give you my office address.
Sure, whatever you want.
Unless you object to that.
I... Whatever Mr. Aller wants.
Actually, I'd rather have, if we're here as a Bridgewater resident, your Bridgewater address.
Okay. 32 Shady Lane. It's Bridgewater, but it uses the Bound Brook Post Office.
Gotcha.
Okay? Okay. Sir, I didn't get the spelling of your last name.
L-A-N-G, Lang.
I looked at the transcript briefly. Did you give testimony the first night briefly? Somebody from Snapbox, I thought did.
If I did, it was a few minutes.
We had some questions on office hours and the first, on November 12th, he did provide some very quick bits of testimony, and he was sworn in for that.
I'm not, I don't, sir, with all due respect, my objection is that I think you're coaching the witness, and I don't want that to happen.
Excuse me?
I'm serious. I got a response.
Well, timeout, timeout, timeout. I just provided factual testimony of Mr. Lang, and the fact that he did give testimony to help you out, to provide better questioning for the witness. So why don't we, why don't we just take a deep breath and reset?
In all fairness...
I certainly will not coach any witness, and I will go out to great lengths to coach you, who is not versed in land use law as a resident of Bridgewater. I will go to great lengths to help you
That's fine.
ask a better question. So with that said...
Here's the deal. Try to keep that to a minimum, because the response I got said...
Keep what to a minimum? Keep what to a minimum?
That kind of questioning, okay?
I didn't ask a question. I provided factual...
Here's my concern. Let me, let me express my concern. I got a response from that gentleman, okay? He's a motivator for this application.
Stop. Which gentleman? You're pointing at people. You're pointing at people. Which gentleman?
Say it again?
You just said "that gentleman." So which gentleman?
Mr. Lang, okay?
Okay.
Now, my concern is credibility, okay? And that's why I raised this issue right now. I got a response from him before you, before you came into the discussion, that said he wasn't sure. He's the motivator for this application, okay? It's his company who's really pushing this thing. And if he doesn't know if he appeared to give testimony in the first hearing of this, I suggest that there may be a real credibility issue here, okay? I made my point. Let me proceed.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Sir, did you or did you not appear at the first meeting in November?
I did appear.
Okay, so now you say you appeared. Before, you weren't sure.
No, you asked if I gave testimony.
Good. You weren't sure that you gave testimony. Did you give testimony? Sir, can you answer the question?
Yeah, I answered to the hours of operation.
Okay, so you did give testimony in November, and you weren't sure before.
Quite honestly, from, I'm not sure if you were here at that meeting or not.
I wasn't here, but I read the transcript.
So a majority of our time was spent going through the civil engineering plan.
But that wasn't your testimony?
No, it was not.
I read the whole thing, and that was Mr. Winters, correct?
That's correct.
In fact, you did give testimony, and that's what you're saying now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, how long has Snapbox been in business?
10 years.
Okay. Were you with the company the whole time?
I'm a co-founder.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I am a co-founder.
Okay. Is Snapbox a New Jersey corporation?
We're based in Pennsylvania.
So are you incorporated in Pennsylvania?
We're incorporated in Delaware. We are based in Philadelphia.
I'm sorry.
And we have nine locations in New Jersey.
All right, let's start again. You're a Delaware corporation.
That's correct.
Well, you made some statement about Pennsylvania.
We're headquartered in Pennsylvania.
Headquartered. Are you authorized to do business in Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Okay. Are you authorized to do business in New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay. And how long have you been authorized to do business in Jersey?
10 years.
All right. And I thought I saw, I heard from your testimony that there are nine facilities now in New Jersey, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Have all of those locations been in business for substantial periods of time?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go through them. Let me, let me just make one general statement. You testified for about two hours, but I have not seen one document to support any of your testimony. Did you bring documents with you here today that support the testimony that you gave roughly the last two hours?
I do not have documents with me.
Okay, so you, you can't produce a single document, if I were to get into detail with you, about your prior testimony for two hours?
What is your question? What, what...
Question right now is general. What did you bring so that we can attempt to either verify or tell?
I brought expertise and institutional knowledge.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I brought expertise and institutional knowledge.
No documents. You said that. Okay. Sir, of the nine locations in New Jersey, they're all active right now, correct?
Yes.
Have there been other locations in New Jersey over the past 10 years that are not now active or no longer your, under your control pursuant to what I'm going to call third-party management?
We have sold locations.
Okay. When you say you sold them...
I'm going to ask that you let him finish the question.
Sure. That's fine. Do you have something else to add to that question?
We sold that location. We no longer operate it.
Just one?
Correct, in New Jersey.
Okay. When was the earliest location that you established in New Jersey? What date?
Late December 2013.
Okay, so that was about 10 years ago?
Yes.
That was one of your first locations?
Correct.
Is that one still your location?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Have there, and you've only lost one in 10 years?
We didn't lose it, we sold it.
Okay. What was the reason for selling it?
Various reasons why we sell property.
The question was specific. Can you, can you identify the reasons?
We had a great offer.
Okay, well, that's the reason. All right. Have you been to the location in Bridgewater?
Yes.
How many times?
Six or seven times.
Okay, so you've walked it?
Yes.
Is it safe to say that, that commercial district, which is where that lot is, it's in the C5 zone, correct?
I'm not familiar with the classification.
It's a sliver of land?
No.
Between Donahue and Route 22? I'm sorry, you're, sir, 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 you, you must respond to me...
I, I'm not sure what a sliver means.
...during the questioning right now. I'm sorry?
I'm not sure what a sliver means.
Okay, good. This property is triangular, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. And at one point, at one point of the triangle, Donahue Road meets Route 22, correct?
Correct.
What is the widest dimension of the property?
I'm not, I don't know.
Okay, but you walked it six or seven times?
Yes.
Is it 100 feet?
I'm not sure.
Is it 200 feet?
I don't know.
300? Okay. That's fine. Has the company had any litigation in the past 10 years?
Relating to what?
Related to Snapbox businesses.
Yes.
With third-party individuals or companies that have, have worked with you? Does this solve the problem? Okay, and I'm close enough now. All right, let me, let me do this, and I think this will make, make the difference. Is that fine? Okay. So, sir, with respect to litigation, let's focus on litigation with, and I'm, I don't know the term I'm going to use, but with your, I'm going to call them your business partners. And I identify a business partner as an individual or an entity who would provide the land and whatever else they provide for your combined efforts.
No idea what we're doing here. He didn't testify about that aspect of his company, so it's outside the scope of his direct testimony.
Okay. Doesn't this board, I'm, I'm going to address that. Doesn't this board, sir, sir, all right, I'm addressing the board attorney. I don't want to be interrupted, okay?
I'm going to object to your stand. I'm going to give a reason why I'm objecting. Sit down for a second, Mr. Kurzeh.
Yeah.
I understand you don't do a lot of municipal land use law.
Yeah.
But here it's a lot different than in a court.
I know.
There's a, there's a different decorum between the attorneys and those who participate. And, you know, you're more than welcome to ask as many questions of this witness as you would like, with respect to his direct testimony. The board may ask some additional questions even after you're finished. And I understand where you're going. You're trying to establish what's the background of the company who's going to run this operation or the owner.
Now, let me tell you why I believe it's relevant. Go ahead.
So, the, the quorum that we follow here is just not the way you started. We need to ask proper questions in a proper way, and this witness and future witnesses will answer those questions for you. And if you don't understand the answer, or you're not happy with the answer, you're welcome to continue to question that witness. But it's going to be based on his direct testimony properly.
Let me address that issue. It's cross-examination, and I should be given fair latitude, significant latitude, as to the scope of the cross, okay? And I think this board, this board has a right to know about the suitability of this company to address, or not to address, but to stand behind an application that they're seeking approval for. This board really should know how viable this company is. You didn't see or hear anything.
Land use approvals are not predicated on the suitability of an owner. Land use is predicated on the MLUL of New Jersey.
This owner is going to sell this property the day after it's approved.
I know that.
Not approving the owner or the operator, we're approving or not the requested use on the property.
But it was testified to that it's feasible, not feasible, but somebody could likely pull out in a year. I mean, they could likely pull out in a year.
Ask that question, yeah.
All right, let me proceed at this point, okay? I'm sure we'll have other objections along the way. So give me one second.
I just want you to understand, we don't, we as a board don't have the right to approve who the owner is or who the operator is. It just doesn't come into the equation.
Okay, I got that part. Okay. Sir, in operating the locations you operate in, are you governed by the New Jersey statute that controls storage facilities?
There is not a New Jersey statute that controls self-storage that I'm aware of. There are certain laws that we need to adhere to.
Okay. They pertain to rights of unit renters, correct?
Are you referring to lien laws?
Yes.
Okay.
So you do?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you made reference to the use of the term lease with these people. These aren't really leases that you enter into, are they?
They're agreements.
Well, you call them agreements. Aren't they really licenses?
No.
Where they can be revoked at will?
They're agreements.
Okay, but you can revoke the right to use the locker or the storage space at will?
We can.
Have you done much of that? Have you done that?
When circumstances call for that, yes, we do.
Okay, and that's usually when people don't pay their monthly fee?
Could be for a variety of reasons. It could be because they're coming in after hours. It could be because they're storing items that are prohibitive. So yes.
Okay. Do you conduct auctions very often?
Only as often as needed.
How often would that be?
It depends on the property.
Okay. One second. So, I heard questioning to you before about the market that you're trying to meet. You, you used a specific term. It wasn't marketability, but it was market dynamics or something like that. You remember the term?
I mean, it, as it relates to what?
As it relates to finding out whether you can satisfy or, or whether there's a market to put a
Demand?
storage facility in a given location.
Yeah, we have analyzed the market, and we see that there is unmet demand from the consumer base that is here in the community.
Okay. So, in fact, you did that to establish a likelihood of success at the Chimney Rock location, correct?
Yes.
Now, I don't recall hearing any testimony in detail about that study. Was a formal study done?
Yeah, we go through the formulas that we do to understand the dynamics of a marketplace.
Okay. So what specifically did you do to establish demand at Chimney Rock in terms of looking at the market?
Again, we looked at the population, the population growth, households, single-family households, multifamily households, and then existing supply in the market, as well as some other fundamentals, to see if there is additional demand that has been unmet from the existing supply.
In what geographic range?
1, 3, 5 miles.
Specifically for this property, correct?
Yes.
Do you have somebody in your organization who does the market studies?
We have a number of folks that do that.
Are they independent, or are they employees of the organization?
They're employees.
Do you know the per, the name of the person who did the one here?
It was a team effort, so we would have a number of individuals that contribute to the project.
Okay. Do you recall what locations that competitor, well, let me ask it this way. Did you identify competitors within certain distances?
We are able to identify competitors within any distance that we choose.
Okay, so what did you choose? It sounds like we're going...
The 1, 3, yeah, the 1, 3, and 5 mile.
Okay. Do you remember what locations you found when you decided to look at competition?
Found everything that you would find on a Google search.
Okay. Did you find anything in Greenbrook?
I don't remember offhand.
Okay. Were you...
Sir, if we, if we can get you back on the microphone, please.
Can you use the microphone, please?
All right, I can hear you.
If you don't talk into the microphone, people at home watching can't hear you, and also the hearing impaired can't hear you.
That's fine. So, I think my last question was, did you locate anything in Greenbrook?
I don't recall that specifically.
Okay. Did you locate anything in Bound Brook?
I do not have the details with me right now to detail every single location that we've analyzed within the marketplace.
For this property?
Correct.
Okay. What about Middlesex? What about Warren? When you say no, you didn't find any, or you don't know?
I don't have that information right now.
Okay. What about Watchong?
Again, I don't have that information with me.
Okay. So any town I give you that's contiguous to Bridgewater, you would give me the same response?
Correct.
Do you know that there's a storage facility that was built in Bound Brook, other than from your study?
The competition supply is not tied to municipality areas. If a consumer is coming from the next town over to here, they're not refusing to choose a coffee shop, bakery, self-storage facility because it is in Bound Brook versus the next town over. It is what is most convenient to that customer.
Well, you're talking about, excuse me, you're talking about the customers now. I was talking about the competition. And the reason why...
I'm, I'm not worried about the competition. The competition that we've seen is stabilized. So I, this is not a competitive practice discussion.
And Mr. Kurzehka, I can tell you as well that the board would not consider any kind of market economics in making their decision. It's just outside of the scope of what they should be considering.
Okay. What was the single most important factor that led you to choose this location?
Demand.
Okay. And that was what, based upon anything specific? What factors?
The factors that I've outlined through my testimony.
Okay. I heard the board question you about warehousing. Are you familiar with that issue in Bridgewater?
Yes, I heard the chairman...
You weren't, you were not aware of that issue before tonight?
We're not a warehousing business. So, no, that, we are self-storage, and that's what this application...
But in fact, did you concede that your units could be turned into warehouses?
They cannot be turned into warehouses.
And that's because you police them, correct?
It's, it's because that's not what the use is, and, and for warehouses, if you, if you're familiar with a warehouse, self-storage is very different.
Okay. One second. No further questions right now.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public like to ask a question? Please, come on up. Please come on up. You just swivel the microphone back and get your name and address, please.
John Laurencell, 9 Deerhead Drive. And that's spelled L-A-U-R-E-N-C-E-L-L-E. Bridgewater resident for 34 years, I think. Long time. So, we've lived there the whole time we're in town. And the town has always communicated the posture that they don't want to develop 22 the way Greenbrook and Plainfield have developed 22 with the light pollution, the commerce, and everything. Question is, is that still hold true? Is that still the town partnership plan?
So this is a time to question the witness?
Just the witness. Okay, so my questions have to do with quality of life. We have horrible problems...
And the microphone, sir.
We have horrible problems with traffic lighting and flooding in the area. All right. Flooding, anytime it's rained, if you go on 22 West, you see it's a complete mud hole because everything running off the mountain doesn't work as far as catching all the runoff. What's being done at this property to abate that? I don't say it because it's directly affecting my property, but me as a taxpayer, I have to pay the municipal workers to go out and clean the highway at a significant cost every time we have one of those storms. So that's why I want to know, what are we doing to mitigate the water?
Sir, those three areas in which you identified traffic lighting and flooding were subjects of testimony by the civil engineer at the last meeting, not this.
Okay. All right, so the town is good with the plan, then? The lighting isn't going to be horrible?
We have new plans from the applicant that deal specifically with lighting. We're going to get questions to, opportunity to question those plans. Why don't we ask the attorney what else he's planning and putting on with his case?
After the operations witnesses concluded, we plan on bringing an architect to design the building, testify about the architecture. Our civil engineer will come back to testify about the changes in the plans that were resubmitted on December 1st, which includes the issues that you identified.
Right.
And of course, we have a professional planner.
And you'll have an opportunity to ask all of those folks questions.
That's the next meeting.
The next meeting gets assigned.
It will be a subsequent meeting. It will not be...
It will be a subsequent meeting, not tonight's meeting.
Yes, there's two ways you're going to be able to find out about it. It's either through the Land Use Office and you can also go on our website and we're going to make everyone notice.
And I have no questions. I'm a man who wants to run a business. He needs 20-some-odd variances to make this business happen. I question, why do we have zoning laws if we're going to allow 20-some variances?
Why, there's the municipal land use law.
Right. It defies logic. Just a common man, it defies logic, you know?
And you get all of that and they're going to present those witnesses and you can ask all those questions about traffic, lighting, flooding to their engineer when he comes back and...
Subsequent meeting. Thank you. I won't take any more of your time, then.
No. If you're satisfied, we're satisfied.
You know, we don't have the information in front of us to discuss today, so there's no point. I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Okay. And at the end, if you don't get that information, by all means, you can ask that of the applicant and you can also give a statement. Speaking for or against.
It's really problematic. I mean, the noise, the traffic is really bad in that area. Anybody who lives there could tell you it's horrible.
I will give you an opportunity to make that statement at the end. All right. Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public? All right. It is 9:41. Okay.
Give you a minute to set up your computer.
Swear a minute again?
I did. So Mr. Marzella, I'll just remind you that you are under oath.
Yes.
Mr. Marzella, please start by giving the board the benefit of your education, your experience.
Name for the record.
Start with that.
Sure, yes. My name is Robert Marzella. I'm an architect with SNS Architects and Engineers in Montvale, New Jersey. I am one of the partners of the firm. In 2001, I received my license to practice architecture in New Jersey. And I'm a graduate of Virginia Tech School of Architecture in 1995. And I've testified before numerous boards, including some brief testimony last year.
Is your license still current and in good standing?
It is.
All right. This board accepts you as a professional architect.
How long have you been licensed?
I'm sorry? How long?
Uh-huh.
2001. So 23 years?
Just wanted to test your math. Mr. Marzella, why don't you start by describing what you were asked to do and what you ended up designing?
Yes, I was brought on board to design the self-storage building itself based on the parameters of the site and the requirements of my client.
You've designed self-storage facilities in other locations for other clients as well?
Yes, I have. I've designed three. This is my third one with this particular client. And myself and my firm have done approximately 12 to 15 other facilities that have either been built or are still on the planning board stages or...
I'm going to ask you next to walk the board through the design using whatever exhibits or renderings that you'd like. I know Suzanne is working on your computer, so we'll give you a minute.
No problem.
Well, that's getting...
While we're, that's being done.
Just ask, are you going to be referring to the plans that we have already or is there a rendering coming out?
There are plans that were submitted back in December. Plus, there are the exhibits that were sent in last week. So it's combined, combined both.
So what we'll do is, whatever you use, I'll ask you to describe by date. And if it's something that was submitted in December, we won't need to mark it. If it's something new, we'll mark it and...
Rendering, Steve? I would mark anything that's a rendering if it's the...
If it's been submitted, no.
Architectural plans, we don't have to mark.
Right, right.
All right, so I can start by describing the building. It's a three-story building. As was testified before, it's about 129,000 square feet. It is three stories, two of which are above grade. The third level is considered a cellar. It's actually below grade. There's just a small portion on the south end of the building that's exposed by the egress drive aisle onto Route 22. The building height above the grade is basically the same as what the existing office building is right now. So in terms of height above ground, it's not a real change from what's there in the office building. Three levels. There's a retail section on the first floor. That's about 600 square feet. That's where people, first time, come to the building for the first time, would come in, sign their agreement, take a look at the facilities, which unit size they would want. There's also toilet facilities, electrical utility rooms, sprinkler rooms. That's in the front section of the building. Then throughout the building, there's two elevators that would serve all three floors. There's two egress stairs that services the floors in an emergency situation. The primary loading areas. I'll recap this quickly when we get our plans up on there. But there's a, on the north end of the building, there's a sliding glass door. That's how most customers will come into the building. And then on the southeast end, there's actually a covered area where cars can come in and unload due to inclement weather.
Chairman, I think we're just waiting on the...
We're waiting on production staff, yeah. This may be a sign from the universe. Yes, we're approaching 9:50. We have a hard stop at 10.
Why don't, I can put a board on it. Put up a board and then I can ask you some questions that you may not need that for, so we can...
Okay.
Let's just make sure members of the public can see this as well.
Do you have any recommendations for where it should go, then? Sideways like that? Why don't you describe what you've just put on the easel?
So what we've, what I've put up here is, this is a exterior 3D rendering of the proposed self-storage building. This is a view from Route 22, looking up at the property. So the sales office, this is really awkward. The sales office is up in this area. And then as you move further down Route 22, it slopes off, the grade drops off.
So now, you did that presentation orienting to the...
Steve, sorry, but I know we want the people there to see it.
That's where I'm going.
Board needs to see it.
That's where I'm going. So, two things. You may have to do that twice, but two, because we have a stenographer here who's going to be transcribing, they don't know where you're pointing. So on any exhibit that you point to, if you could just describe the general location so that that can pick up in the transcript.
And I would point out, it's now up on a screen.
There you go.
Okay. To the right side of the image, that is the view from coming in the main drive aisle off of Route 22. So as you come up from the right, you will see the front office and retail store. Moving to the left, you see the entrance, the sliding glass doors where customers would come in and out with their merch, with their storage items. And then as you continue across the left side of the render is the drive aisle that goes along the building, along Route 22, and eventually...
Marzella, I'm sorry to interrupt again, Steve, but what you have on that board...
It's different, I know.
And what we have on a screen are two different...
Yes, we're, that's, I'm going to get there. So the doc, if you look at the screen and what you look at the board, we have two different renderings. You provided both of these renderings as part of the submission in December. So unless Mr. Aller disagrees, I don't believe we need to mark these as specific exhibits. But the exhibit that is on the board and the one that's on the screen are different and you can explain how they are in terms of alternative exterior treatments that we proposed to the board.
Correct. So the, what's on the video monitors that the public can see, that was the original design that we had submitted for our testimony in November of last year. As you can see, to the right side, where you see the brick structure, there's a parapet that protrudes further than the building, the main building height. That parapet triggered a variance. So what we did on the board that I have in front of me now, we heard the concerns about the height of the building, the concerns about the reason for having a parapet that creates a variance. So we lowered that parapet to be compliant with the local ordinance. That's what this rendering represents that I have on the board here, in addition to the additional landscaping that Mr. Winter's office had added since the previous hearing.
And you may have said this already, but is there a date? Is there a date on the, what you have in front of you on that board?
There is not a date on there. So the first time you're seeing it is...
Mark that, it'd just be clear.
Happy to.
I have a date for it. The date is 10/23/23.
No, I'm asking about what's on the board.
So 10/20, she's, what, 10/23 would be the one that's on the video screen.
Right, because you said that was the original.
That's the original.
What's on the board is the revised architectural plan.
Is the revised rendering.
Of the arch...
Of the architectural rendering.
Right.
It's an alternate.
We're going to get there in a second. Let's take one step at a time.
Let's just mark the board A4.
The board that's on the easel is now going to be marked A4. And for the record, what's being marked as A4 is the rendering that was revised to reduce the height of the parapet to come into compliance and was submitted as part of the December submission.
Correct.
The rendering that is on the screen was submitted as part of the early application and we're not marking that, correct, Mr. Aller?
That was in the original submission. I don't think we have to mark that.
I agree. So now, now that we've done that, let me clarify what we're presenting here to the board. The applicant has proposed that if the board were inclined to grant this, to give them the option of exterior treatment, whether from an aesthetic point of view or other reasons, they'd prefer the parapet wall that's on the screen or the one without the variance relief that's on the board?
That is correct. The client has proposed two alternates. They would be happy to whichever one the board. If there's a preference, they would go with the board's decision.
Why don't you continue describing the...
Right. So again, so a lot of people have a preconceived notion of what self-storage buildings look like. Now, if you're going to look in more of the highway districts and things, you'll see three-to-four-story buildings that are clad in insulated aluminum panels, usually white or gray. And then sometimes you'll see if it's not a Snapbox, for example, Extra Space or Cube Smart tends to have bold branding. So you'll see a lot of red. You'll see a lot of bright orange for public storage or wasabi green for extra space. In this case, we are, we do recognize it's our surroundings with the neighborhoods nearby, the existing office building. So what we did is we tried to make this self-storage, not the metal box that you would typically see, but something that's more reflective of residential or an office park. So there's smaller-scale windows, brick material, cornices, Ephes, which is a synthetic stone finish. So we really upscaled the quality of materials that go on this building as opposed to the standard insulated box. We also tried to help. What's important is it's a two-story building. As I mentioned, it's very similar in size to the office building. Self-storage has very low floor-to-floor heights. So that enables us to keep the height of the building down lower. Most offices are going to be in the 13-foot floor-to-floor. So we're about 2 and 1/2 feet per story shorter than what a new office building would be. So we've taken measures to try and kind of minimize the impact of the building on the site by use of the material and...
Hold on a second. I'm sorry. I don't normally interrupt, but I just want you to repeat that. So what you're saying is what? That this is, is shorter than an office building? A two-story office building? Is that what you're saying?
It's a lot, most office buildings have taller floor-to-floor heights. So because you need more headroom for office space and such. So you're usually looking at a 12-to-13-foot height floor-to-floor. Self-storage doesn't need that height because you're only given enough room to put the storage units in. So it's an eight-foot ceiling, minimal sprinkler, lighting, HVAC, and the floor. So we're able to kind of keep the scale of the building down.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, not a problem.
All right, but what you just said, this plan would be for an eight-foot ceiling?
So interior, so you'll have the slab. You'll have eight feet to the security mesh that Mr. Lang mentioned earlier. So a typical storage unit is eight feet high. Then you'll have room for sprinklers, lighting, and the HVAC ductwork, and then the concrete deck above. deck above. So, it's a 10-foot-six floor-to-floor, but the actual usable height for a storage unit would be eight feet. Again, also to try and help with the scale of the building, you can see on both renderings at the midpoint, between the first and second floor, we've got some horizontal banding. So, what that does is, it kind of draws your eye to the midpoint of the building, and it helps detract from the height. So, even though it's a shorter-than-normal building, there's architectural features that kind of help increase the horizontality of it and not make it look like such a tall presence on the property.
Mr. Marcela, it would be helpful if you could show us how that building is going to appear to the residents that live on Donahue and behind Donahue, as well as the residents that live across the highway on Vosler. Do you have something that does that?
We have, we have straight-on colored elevations of the building. It's not a specific view from those points.
Can you bring that with you at the next meeting?
We could, we could look into making those presentations. Yeah, but the elevation's just straight on.
We'll look at them, you know? That's what he's saying, saying they're straight on.
They're not true representation of, it's not going to be the view from someone's backyard.
What's it going to be a view of or from?
It's going to be if you're standing, like, say, if you're just standing, looking at a building, it's, again, it's a straight-on view with no-
The reason I ask the question is, one of the things we're concerned with here for any application is impact on the neighborhood. And the best way to show us that is to visualize. Show us a picture or a rendering of what this facility is going to look like from surrounding residences, like those on or behind Donahue, or like those on Glen Road across the highway.
Right. So, this view would be as, actually as if you're right on the shoulder of Route 22. So, in terms of what you would see from Glen, you'd have the four lanes of Route 22, whatever trees are lining Route 22, dividing the residential area from 22.
Donahue? What about Donahue?
Donahue. Basically, you're going to be looking, I can pull up that elevation. It's a, Donahue's basically a straight road back there, and they're looking right into the side of the-
You can show us what they will see.
I do not have-
You said no. I'm-
No, I do not have an answer.
We only have two minutes, and what he's asking is, the next meeting, why don't you bring that with you? So, we can have an impact.
And really, what he's asking for, Steve, is photo simulation.
Understood.
I'm an artist, remember?
Yeah.
Very pretty pictures, though.
Oh, I mean, yes, we could take pictures along, we could take pictures along Donahue, and you can-
Yes, photo sim is really what I think the board would be very helpful to the board.
Okay. We'll take it back.
All right. It's 10 o'clock. We're going to call it a night. Thank you. Thank you, members of the public that have joined us.
So, before anyone leaves, we can announce the next date for the continued hearing?
Can we?
We have to. We can't re-notice.
Well, let's announce our next meeting. It's going to be February, February 13th. And that evening, we're going to hear 1200 Route 22 Land Investors. And Roger, maybe you can help us out. When would the next available meeting that we don't already have blocked out for one of our three other cases be?
Right now, we're here that we've got applications that hope to be in February. I have a question, the Land Use Administrator today regarding you, and there's a possibility that there's going to be changes to what's already in queue to be requested extension. So, and this, based on this, I would say, we need in March.
So, our March 26th meeting?
We had something for the 12th.
We already have a case for the 12th.
This town has a 12th. He does have everything.
Right.
You understand, you said, you, because some dates have not been-
Right. March 26th work with the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, as you can appreciate, we are, our first hearing was November 14th. It's now November, January 23rd.
Welcome to Bridgewater.
Well, there's, we still need to be able to prosecute these cases. So, is there no benefit, is there no way for a special meeting, Chairman? I have to ask.
That's up to the board, if the board's willing to do a special meeting, and I don't know what they charge for that.
Yeah, that's understandable to be a charge.
That's up to the board.
Why would time be an urgent necessity that would require the board to have a special meeting? Is there an economic impact? Is there a safety impact? Is there something that benefits members of the public? We wouldn't even know if this room was available.
The issue, Mr. Chairman, is, the genesis of this application is that the existing use is at its end, at the end of its useful life. There are mechanical, structural issues which need addressing. If it's going to be in operation much longer, this use would almost be put into play-
Can you document that, can you document that fact? How are you going to document that fact?
Is the building going to fall down between now and the end of March?
I don't stipulate that, no.
And you forget that-
March may not be the end of this, though.
I would think, based on what we saw tonight, it's probably not going to be.
Right. That's why, you know, if it was, then, all right, we have one more hearing.
So, my advice to you is to take the March 26th meeting, and then also work with our Land Use Administrator's office and find, when the planning board is not using this, because every other Tuesday, we only get this two weeks, you know, so the planning board has to be taken into consideration also. They have a much lighter docket than we do right now. So, what we don't finish on March 26th, at that point, I would certainly be willing to entertain a special meeting. But as it stands right now, if there's no safety or public interest measure at stake here, I just can't, in the short notice, schedule that.
With the statement you just made, that you'd be willing to entertain one after March 26th, we'll take the March 26th meeting.
Very good. So, concurrently, we should be working on a special meeting potentially, and let's get dates that are available. And Nancy Probst in the Land Use Office is going to be the one to administer that. She can tell you what the docket looks like for the planning board and help guide you to a special meeting date if it's needed.
And she can coordinate, then, with the board members to see who's available?
We'd have to make sure there is a quorum available. And, you know, as we start to approach April and May and June, colleges graduate, high schools, middle schools graduate, it becomes a tough time of year for the board. So, Nancy can definitely help you out with that, and I'm willing to entertain that if we don't finish on March 26th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that.
Sheriff, you got it.
All right, so, March 26th?
Yes. No further notice.
Right. So, for members of the public, this meeting will be adjourned at this point. It will continue in this room on March 26th at 7:00 p.m., and there will be no further notices from the applicant.
All right. And our next meeting, 1200 Route 22 Land Industries, I'm sorry, Land Investors, February 13th, this room, 7:00 p.m. Have a motion to adjourn, please.
I move.
All right, Mr. Wiley, second. Mr. Banjor, now. Thank you, everyone.
Yes.
You're listening here. Make it a second. 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 Make it a second.